This regular session of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called This regular session of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to to order at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, March 7th, 2023 in room 137 of the Edison Building. order at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, March 7th, 2023 in room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota People, and we honor the Dakota Nations and the sacred land of all Indigenous of the Dakota People, and we honor the Dakota Nations and the sacred land of all Indigenous peoples. peoples. Interested members of the public are welcome and encouraged to view this meeting remotely Interested members of the public are welcome and encouraged to view this meeting remotely on youtube.com/ISD535 where the livestream video can be found. on youtube.com/ISD535 where the livestream video can be found. The agenda and documents for this meeting are available online at rochesterschools.org/BoardDocs. The agenda and documents for this meeting are available online at rochesterschools.org/BoardDocs. Present at this meeting are School Board Members Superintendent Kent Pecel, a non-voting Present at this meeting are School Board Members Superintendent Kent Pecel, a non-voting ex officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk Ms. Laurie Sam. ex officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk Ms. Laurie Sam. Would you please call the roll? Would you please call the roll?
Director Barlow. Director Barlow.
Here.
Here.
Director Cook. Director Cook.
Here.
Here.
Treasurer Garcia. Treasurer Garcia.
Here. Here.
Turk McLaughlin. Turk McLaughlin.
Here. Here.
Director Marvin. Director Marvin.
Here. Here.
Chair Nathan. Chair Nathan.
Here. Here.
Vice Chair Workman. Vice Chair Workman.
Here.
Here.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 2.01 is approval of the agenda. Item 2.01 is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Are there any changes to the agenda? Move approval. Move approval.
Second. Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. The agenda has been approved. A note to the Board and community, if we're still meeting at 7 o'clock, we'll take a A note to the Board and community, if we're still meeting at 7 o'clock, we'll take a brief 10-minute recess around that time. brief 10-minute recess around that time. Item 3, comments to the Board. Item 3, comments to the Board. It is important for the School Board to hear from our stakeholders regarding issues It is important for the School Board to hear from our stakeholders regarding issues that impact our students, staff, families, and schools. that impact our students, staff, families, and schools. We welcome communication via email, phone call, at our community engagement listening We welcome communication via email, phone call, at our community engagement listening sessions, and here during comments to the Board. sessions, and here during comments to the Board. A reminder that Policy 206 and Procedure 206A, in accordance with Minnesota statute, A reminder that Policy 206 and Procedure 206A, in accordance with Minnesota statute, set set the time, place, and manner procedures and restrictions on comments to the Board. the time, place, and manner procedures and restrictions on comments to the Board. The policy and procedure focus on privacy protections for students and staff, and prohibit The policy and procedure focus on privacy protections for students and staff, and prohibit comments that are threatening, profane, lewd, vulgar, obscene, harassing, abusive, or constitute comments that are threatening, profane, lewd, vulgar, obscene, harassing, abusive, or constitute a personal attack on an individual. a personal attack on an individual. We welcome two speakers this evening. We welcome two speakers this evening. When your name is called, please come to the table. When your name is called, please come to the table. If you have written materials for the Board, please provide them for the Assistant School If you have written materials for the Board, please provide them for the Assistant School Board Clerk, and she'll distribute them to Board Members. Board Clerk, and she'll distribute them to Board Members. Choose a microphone to speak into and be seated. Choose a microphone to speak into and be seated. You'll heard most clearly by the people in the room if you're seated and speak directly You'll heard most clearly by the people in the room if you're seated and speak directly into a microphone. into a microphone. You'll have three minutes to speak, and the timer will be displayed on the screens in You'll have three minutes to speak, and the timer will be displayed on the screens in the room. the room. Please begin your remarks by stating your name. Please begin your remarks by stating your name. Our first speaker this evening is Gail Madison. Our first speaker this evening is Gail Madison. One is student athletics activities recognition. This is an information item and celebration. Superintendent Pecel.
Thank you, Chair Nathan, Directors of the Board, and I want to welcome all of our athletes and their parents, caregivers, coaches. We are thrilled to have you here. We have two schools represented tonight. We are continuing to think through how we recognize our athletes, and we've chosen to focus on those of you who progressed in our state tournaments, but we know there were thousands of other students who participated, may not have progressed as far. I want to thank all of you for doing the amazing work that you did. Got to a lot of your games and meets, an equal number of boys and girls. I didn't start tweeting from everyone until my friend Claudia Tobini, who's here, told me I should start, because, and I appreciate that, because now I've started doing it, but you did us proud, and we want to thank you. We are going to start with Mayo High School, and our legendary Activities Director Jeff Whitney is not able to be with us tonight, so our legendary Principal Troy Priggy is going to pinch-hit for Mr. Whitney. What we'd like to do, especially for those of you who are parents, caregivers, and others, we're going to try and hold our applause until we get through first Mayo and then Century High School, and then we'll also just give everyone a big round of recognition once we've gotten through the athletes, but then Troy and then Mr. Queesley, the floor's yours to bring folks up, bring the coaches up, and we'll recognize you by school at the end.
Sure, and thank you for not having them clap for legendary Principal Priggy here, so it would have been chaos. Anyways, I love when Mr. Whitney is gone, and I'm able to do this, because this is fun for me to come up here to recognize everybody. So Chair Marvin, members of the Board, Superintendent Pecel, Cabinet Members. As Coach Dowell makes his way up here to talk about swimming, this is awesome that you do this, so we can get our athletes, our student-athletes here, and give them the recognition they deserve. So I know we have some people that are trying to get to Lakeville, so we'll run through this as quickly as we can, but Coach Dowell.
Hello. This is the second time I've been here. I brought a former student up a few years back, but I'd like to recognize Alonzo Montori. Want you to come up here, Alonzo?
Yeah.
This is Alonzo's third year with the team. He's a senior, and he definitely saved his best-for-last at the state meet this past weekend. He finished fifth with a new team record in the 200 freestyle, and ninth in the 100 freestyle. Both were his career-best times.
Yeah, athletes are welcome to give the Gettysburg Address, or anything you want to do, you know?
Four score and seven.
There you go! Very good!
Yeah, I didn't really know that I would have an opportunity to speak, so all I really want to say is that I had an amazing season, and Coach Dowell really helped me out with that, and I just want to recognize all my teammates. Coach Scott, who couldn't be here today, he also was a huge part of my season. I just want to thank all of them and recognize them as well, because they couldn't be here. That's all.
Next up, as Mr. Art Trimble comes to the podium here, he also wins awards himself.
He is the Coach of the Year in Section 1 AAA, and I don't want to steal any of his thunder, so he's going to talk about the many great things that our wrestlers did this year.
As Mr. Priggy said, thank you for having us. This is always an amazing opportunity to be able to give some recognition publicly for these wonderful athletes. Keep going, Kai. There you go. All right, we had a tremendous year in the sport of wrestling at Mayo High School. We did a lot of firsts for the city of Rochester. This was the first time Mayo has ever qualified as a team for the state tournament, and as far as I could dig, it's the first time any Rochester team has qualified for the state tournament in wrestling. So it was a huge step up for our program. We have a number of athletes with us here that also qualified for the state tournament individually. We had nine athletes qualify for the state tournament individually, which is a school record for us as well, so we brought a few of them with us. We also won the Minnesota Wrestling Coaches Association Academic Silver Award for a Team GPA of 3.466. We were just short of the Gold Award of 3.5, but we'll be working on it. It's probably my fault. Somewhere down the line, I don't remember, but, all right. So we have our captains that I'm going to introduce first. We have Kai Kobayashi on the end, a senior, Dylan Pepper, a senior right there, and then Logan Berger, also a senior. Dylan and Logan both also qualified for the individual state tournament. Then we have two individuals that placed at the state tournament, Calder Sheehan, a sophomore, placed fifth at the state tournament, and Jeriana Marshall, who set a new standard for Mayo High School, being our first female wrestler to qualify for the state tournament, placed third at the state tournament this last weekend, which is a tremendous accomplishment. We all have some different hair color this week. Going as a team this year, except for Kai. Kai had extenuating circumstances, so he couldn't do that. They're a great group of kids that have come out for wrestling. Many been with my youth program that I have to get to and start running here in about 15 minutes since they were little. Like Logan and Dylan were kindergartners when they started working with me, so I've known most of these athletes longer than I've known my son. And first, I'd also like any parents or family members, just stand up and give a wave if you've been supporting these athletes this season, so you got to give a little recognition to them, because they do a lot of work for us, so. It's been a fantastic year, so I'm really proud of them. Do you guys have anything you want to say, or Jeriana, you want to say? Logan, you were last here? All right, well, thank you for this opportunity.
Great job.
Thank you.
Congrats.
It was super fun to follow this group this year, too, and one side note on Coach Trimble, his mom also works at Mayo High School, and she's very super proud of the things that he's accomplished as a coach and teacher. But one of the nice accolades for Art is that, I think it was like 73 days in a row, he was in the gym with youth and high school kids, and that's just the dedication it takes, and it really shows in the success that they've had. And we're pretty youthful, too, so I think it's going to be a staple here on this stage for years to come, so congratulations. Lastly, and not least, we have Coach Romling coming up to introduce Hannah Hansen, and she wins so many awards, I don't even know which one he's going to present on tonight, but he's going to introduce Hannah.
Thank you. You know, just like the legendary Mr. Whitney, he's very good at getting me here and not telling me I have to talk. That was really nice. As you can see, Hannah, she got all that. As you can see Hannah, she got all academic for basketball. She's been captain for us, she led us. We were 23 and 5 this year, she did a great job with that. She's also all-state in volleyball, all-state honorable mention basketball, everything for track. I mean, she's just an amazing person, amazing kid, so I'm really happy that we're here to talk about her. Yeah, you got anything to say Hannah? Nope?
Thank you, and they're free to go to Lakeville because they have another one participating.
They are, but we want to thank all of the Mayo athletes and parents for coming. Well, Chair Nathan, if I may, I'd like to recognize Mark Queesley, who's our activities director at Century High School, who is going to give us the opportunity to meet some of the great athletes and coaches that they fielded this season.
Good evening, everyone. As our boys swim team comes up, they have a little bit different color hair than the Mayo wrestling team, but we'll have Coach Freeman and the swimmers come up. A couple of side notes for us. Byron Callis was a state qualifier for us in wrestling. Salas Wagstaff was a qualifier for us in diving, eighth grader for us. The adapted hockey team will be heading to the state tournament on Friday this week to represent Rochester Public Schools as well. And then just one little side note, as Dr. Pecel said, our criteria right now is state place finishers for team and individual, all-state, all-state academic. And as a department, we're looking at this to try and recognize more students. Sometimes we have huge crowds down here, sometimes we have smaller groups like this. And then we have the new group coming up soon as our activities that we will be recognizing on a separate night, and I know those advisors are excited about this. But I'm going to introduce our big nine and section champs. This is the Century Boys Swim Team, Coach Linda Freeman.
Thank you, Director, Superintendent, thank you, Mark Queesley. And just thanks for acknowledging all of the, all of the athletes. This Century Boys Swim Dive Team, these are our all-state medalists. That means that they were top eight at the class AA meet out of eight sections in the state with many hundreds of participants. This team had something of a dream season this year. I'm going to say this really slowly because I need to relish it. Not sure how often this might happen again. After 13 years, it's only happened one other time. They had an undefeated dual meet record, they're the big nine conference champions, they're the section champions, and they finished 12th at state. We are definitely the little train that could once we get up there with against all the larger metro, metro schools in the state. Tonight, our five all-state medalists, we have Jensen Richard on the, next to the last there. Jensen's a senior captain, he was an all-state winner in the 100 back, finishing in eighth place. He swam his four lengths of the backstroke event in 52 seconds, or an average of 13 seconds per length. Then we have our all-state medalist 200 free relay, which is the rest of the guys here. To my immediate left, Jack Homme, he's captain. Nate Cromer Jr., Albert Huza Jr., and Owen Kelly's a sophomore. They finished in eighth place and just 3.8 seconds separated first place from eighth place in this event. Each of these swimmers accomplished their two lengths of the pool with an average of just under 11 seconds per length. They were flying. We have Constellation finalists also, which is ninth through 16th place, and I'd like to mention some of these guys, all of these guys, because they really excelled as well. We have an eighth grader Silas Wagstaff who placed in the one meter diving event. Jack Homme was in the 50 free and the 100 fly. We had ninth grader Gavin Potter in the 500 free, which is 20 lengths of the pool. And two more relays, 200 medley relay, which featured Andrew Lindon, a freshman, Nathan Zhang, another captain, senior, Albert Hu, and Nate Crom. And then our 400 free relay with Jack, Andrew, Gavin, and Owen. These guys all swam that relay for 100 yards, four lengths of the pool, in less than 50 seconds. These swimmers also represent and lead a team with excellence in the classroom as well. They earned the Minnesota State High School League Section Gold Academic Award by holding a 3.84 unweighted team GPA for 10th through 12th graders. They also earned the All-American Scholastic Team Silver Standard Award for ninth through 12th graders, and that's by holding a 3.64 team GPA. That's from the National Interscholastics Swim Coaches Association. This is the 13th consecutive year that this team has earned those GPA standards. We also have three big nine conference scholars for GPAs over 3.64. Seniors and all captains, two of them are here tonight, Jensen Richard, Jack Homme, and Nathan Zhang. And finally, we have two academic All-Americans for a 3.75 grade point average and above. Nathan Zhang again at 4.0, and Captain Jack at 3.96. I need to acknowledge and thank assistant coach James Duffrin at the end there, and diving coach Brett Marandi for making this a very special season. We're taking good care of your new pool. Started it out really good, and we're very grateful for the opportunity. It's a facility that the district and community can be very proud of. Thank you.
If I can just interject briefly, I want to just say, Chair Nathan, I mean, the colored hair on all the athletes is great, but Jack, the middle-aged gray hair is awesome. Don't let anybody bring you down. It is perfect.
That might be a combination of chlorine plus a dive, so.
What do you mean? He looks fantastic.
Oh, yours isn't chlorine? Okay, okay. Just a couple of tidbits that Linda didn't mention. In the 50 free, 18 qualifiers, 16 of those state qualifiers had a 21.1 to a 21.89. That's fast, that's fingernail to fingernail finishing in that piece. For Art and the wrestling team, this was, I had the fortunate opportunity to host and run that wrestling tournament. 20 athletes were ranked in the top 20 in the country. Six of the final matches ended up in overtime, double overtime, or what they call an ultimate tiebreaker. It was the deepest tournament that I've seen in a long time as a, as an administrator running that tournament. Competition this year for these athletes is unbelievable, both in the classroom to excel as our students first, and then when they go and strap on the shoes and the goggles after school for another couple of hours and then represent us the way they do with dignity and class is unbelievable. And we thank you again for that opportunity for our student athletes. Thank you. Forgot to mention, we have some Century parents here. Please stand and thank you for your support, too, for our kids. Go Panthers.
We'll move on to item 4.02, Rotary Holiday Classic Recognition. This is an information item that will follow up with the resolution. Superintendent Pecel.
As we talk about the commitment to young people, their development, athletics, we are at a transition point in the community to recognize our Rotary Clubs that have sponsored a Holiday Classic literally for decades. And I had the opportunity to take my own kids, my first year in Rochester, and then go again this year. And it's the last year that the clubs have decided to put this on, but we wanted to take a moment to recognize them and thank them. We have a resolution that the chair will be reading, and we had so many names that were submitted, I'm not exactly sure who to recognize from Rotary to give us some comments. And so with apologies for that, would invite, thank you so much, please come on up, we really want to hear from you. And then I don't know, Chair Nathan, if we're going to have comments first or read the resolution first?
Well, comments first.
Comments, great. Thank you so much.
Dr. Pecel and school board members, on behalf of the members of the three Rotary Clubs in Rochester, I'd like to thank you for the invitation to speak this evening about one of our club's signature projects, the Rotary Holiday Classic. My name is Lori Lutke, I'm a 26-year member of Rotary, a past club president and past co-chair of the Rotary Holiday Classic. Joining me this evening are several Rochester Rotary members in the audience, including presidents of our three Rotary Clubs and members of the Holiday Classic Planning Committee, including Lynn Clary, who I like to call out, who served on our committee for 33 of the 34 years of the Classic's tenure. Lynn's in the audience. For those of you who may not be familiar with Rotary, it's one of the largest service organizations in the world, with a mission to help others promote integrity and advance world understanding, goodwill, and peace through the fellowship of business, professional, and community leaders. Rotary's motto is service above self, and with that ideal in mind, more than three decades ago, Rochester Rotarians embarked upon a journey to create a fundraising project that would not only provide Rotary members an opportunity to give back to the youth in our community, but showcase area high school basketball talent as well. The first Rotary Holiday Classic was held in 1988 at the Mayo Civic Auditorium with eight high school boys' basketball teams participating. A fellow big nine opponent, Winona, emerged as the Classic's first champion. Girls' teams were added a year later and the footprint of the Classic continued to expand. At its peak, for three days at the end of December, downtown Rochester was home to 32 boys and girls' high school varsity and B squad basketball teams, along with their families and fans. Following each Classic, grant applications were received and reviewed by, and by 2020, more than a million dollars had been given back to local community groups and their projects. For a number of years, impact grants of $30,000 dispersed over a three-year period were awarded to selected organizations. The first impact grant was given in 2001 to help the Good Samaritan Dental Clinic in Rochester. Subsequent impact grants included a joint project with Rochester Parks and Recreation to build a skate park located near Silver, Silver, excuse me, Silver Lake, with another given to the Rochester Arts Center for interactive, adaptable, multilingual kiosks to feature the Arts Center's exhibitors and activities. The last Holiday Classic impact grant was given in 2012 to the Reading Center Dyslexia Institute of Minnesota for a project called the Rotary Adopt a School Literacy Initiative. Rotary partnered with the Reading Center to provide training to Rochester's kindergarten through second-grade teachers in a proven technique to teach reading to struggling readers. Fast forward 34 years from the first Holiday Classic to this past December, and it seems easy to say, the Rotary Holiday Classic has fulfilled its original mission to raise funds for our youth while also providing high school basketball teams an opportunity to share their talent with fans near and far. But as the saying goes, all good things must come to an end. And sadly, the 2022 Holiday Classic was Rochester Rotary's last. After giving nearly 1.1 million dollars in grants to more than 150 youth projects and nonprofit organizations, including Rochester's high school basketball programs, it is bittersweet to close a chapter on something that has provided such a positive impact in our community and means so much to so many people. Rochester Rotarians would like to publicly thank the many sponsors and advertisers who have supported the Holiday Classic over the years, as well as the hundreds of high school teams and their coaches who participated. And last but not least, the families and fans who came to watch some pretty good basketball. Thank you.
Thank you Lori. And we didn't want to let this occasion go by without formally recognizing this event and the Rotary Club, so I will read the resolution and ask for a motion and a second. Whereas the Rotary Holiday Classic was created in 1988 to support our local high school basketball programs, and whereas the last Rotary Holiday Classic was held in December of 2022, and whereas at its peak, the Classic welcomed 32 boys and girls' high school basketball teams and their families for three days during the last week of December, and whereas the Classic has contributed over 1 million to area youth-related nonprofit organizations and more than $80,000 to local schools to help support our basketball programs. And whereas the Classic has been operated for the past 34 years by the Rotary Holiday Classic Steering Committee and scores of dedicated Rochester Rotarians who volunteered countless hours to the event, be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 535 expresses our gratitude to the Rochester Rotary for their investment in organizing the Rotary Holiday Classic for the past 34 years, our appreciation for the partnership between Rochester Public Schools and the Rotary Clubs of Rochester, and the financial support that the Classic generated for Rochester's schools and youth programs, and our recognition of the unique opportunity that the Rotary Holiday Classic provided for generations of families to gather and support high caliber basketball. Move approval. Second. It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion passes and with our gratitude. Thank you for being here tonight. Our next item is 4.03, Updates from American Indian Education. This is an information item. Superintendent Pecel.
Thank you Chair Nathan and Directors of the Board. As you know, we heard at your most recent meeting from our American Indian Parent Education Committee, who issued their annual letter describing their perceptions of the work that we are doing to support our Native American students in Rochester Public Schools. And so as the board begins to look toward its response to the committee's letter, we wanted to provide you with an update from our Native American liaisons. And so as board members are well aware, the work that Amelia Cordell and Tucker Quintone do is housed in our Office of Equity Engagement led by Will Ruffin II. And so it is a pleasure to recognize Amelia and Tucker to give us an update on the great work that they are doing, which we are really honored to support and hear about today.
Thanks for having us. We know you missed us since the last meeting.
Never enough.
You switched places, though.
You guys switched it up a little bit. So we just want to, like Kent was saying, is come and share what we've been doing so far this school year and kind of our goals moving forward.
Salute. Yeah, we also just want to clarify that even though we work on behalf of this program and the parent committee in conjunction with, that the work isn't just ours, it's really district-wide. And I think you'll see from some of the things that we've been doing this year that it has become more and more of a collaboration across the district, which is a really positive thing in my opinion. It's really nice to be asked to come and share what we do in the classrooms and on different committees, so we're really grateful about that, and I think you'll see some of that in our work.
So this first start of the calendar is what our normal day-to-day life is. I create newsletters that I send to the family and to other leadership, that they send to teachers. So I have one newsletter for families and one newsletter for teachers. The family's newsletter has a bunch of events and information, and the teacher one has materials and resources that they can implement in the classroom ideally. We also do our classroom visits with students. I meet mostly with elementary and middle school, and Tucker meets with the high school students. So I try to at least get to all elementary schools at least once a month, meet with my kiddos, 30 minutes, and then I'll always meet with them more if parents needed, or if they needed, or if they just need some, a friendly face that they like to talk to. So just being that person for them and their families as needed.
Yeah, and we found those monthly meetings where the students get together with each other is very important for them to see their smaller community within their larger school. And just to be able to talk openly about their identity and what that means to them in the setting, that's been very positive.
Some specific things that, working on elementary-wise, we were learning colors in Dakota, so we made some bracelets. We talked about medicine wheels, but a big part of the big We talked about medicine wheels, but a big part of the beginning of the year is just the identity piece. Coming, Rochester is a very unique area where a lot of our Native students come from various different nations, so there's not ones that -- not all of our students are Dakota or Ojibwe like Minnesota is, so we have to kind of be a little bit more flexible and fluid, and just trying to offer things that most of our Native students could identify with. So we spend a lot of time on just understanding, having the students understand who they are and why they're important.
Also, because we have so many tribes represented in the district, we also try to be inclusive of that and to teach some things about what it is to be Native today and how often that is in a tribal, not specifically to maybe their home tribe if they don't live on a reservation, which they're obviously not doing at this point. So it's kind of a combination of discovering their tribal connections, but also other tribal connections that we have available to us here in Rochester.
So here's just a couple of examples of some things that we were doing. So there's medicine wheels with the middle schoolers in elementary, and then we did a lot of herb work, so talking about the native herbs to Minnesota with all of the Native students, and then we also did that with some science classrooms at ALC as well. So then our next part is American Indian education for all. So that was kind of mostly what we do with our individual Native students, and then these are some of the things that we've been doing district-wide. So we offer some professional development. So far this year, we've done identity in the classroom, our Native American students, that gets offered to all new teachers, to RPS, land acknowledgements, and then some elementary music work for some of our bigger PDs so far this year. And then some of our classroom collaborations.
Yeah, we've been asked to come in a variety of different classrooms, English, science, facts, social studies, some of the ethnic studies classes as well, music classes. So we're in all kinds of different places, and it's fun to incorporate our perspective, I guess. So it's kind of more about weaving Native culture into the current classroom and the current topics that they're discussing.
So like right now, at Dakota Middle School, they're really hitting the Dakota Legwar of 1862 and a lot of things like that, so just going in and talking with those students, giving our own personal perspectives on things that are happening, but then also just being another resource, not just for our Native families, but for our teachers as well, just so that they have the best opportunities and resources to teach American Indian education well, and having the trust within themselves to be able to do that, because I know growing up in small-town Midwest, we didn't get the best history lessons, so being able to be that person for our teachers is very valuable to us.
Yeah, and just any examples of an unusual way to bring in Native culture into a classroom. I had a teacher reach out to me, an English teacher. They were teaching writing that was, I guess, argumentative or a debate kinds of topics, and they wanted to look at an issue that might involve Native culture. So I went in and talked about the Indian Child Welfare Act, which was established to help protect Native children from being adopted out of their homes without permission, essentially from the tribe, and now that has been challenged. And there was a case that appeared before the Supreme Court just in the last few months, and we're waiting to hear whether that's going to be overturned or upheld. So a very hot topic in Native culture, but I was able to come in and talk about that, and we talked about the pros and cons of adopting out of tribes, children being adopted out of the tribe into non-Native families. So very rich discussion, something they didn't really know about beforehand, and then they were able to write about it as well.
And just some more examples. My first picture was at Franklin. I went to their Franklin Moms in the morning, and we just had some, we called it Indigenous Style Franklin Moms, where we just had a bunch of centers for them to come and check out different things. And then Orange Shirt Day that we talked about beginning of the year, we had people wearing orange. Those were just some of those pictures. So kind of beyond the classrooms, our family engagement. For our Native families, we've had beating nights, ACT test prep these last couple of weeks, getting our juniors ready for today, so wishing them the best luck and giving them advice on the best testing practices for the ACT. We had a back-to-school Indian Taco Free family dinner. We have our monthly AIPAC meetings. We had a Native Star Knowledge Night at Mayo Planetarium. We just had a night last week at Spark, where they offered our Native families free admittance, and a lot of families came out to play around and have a good time. And then just taking some of our students to Native college fairs up in the cities. So those are some of the family engagement things that we have been doing.
Yeah, and then we've also been trying to do more professional development around the district, but I did have an opportunity to present at the National Indian Education Association Conference in October in Oklahoma City. Amelia was there, and some other people from Rochester came, and a really positive time of networking and learning about what's going on across the U.S. with Native education.
And just a couple more family -- or pictures. The first one is from our first family back-to-school event, where we had Indian tacos, and then just a couple pictures of our beating night. They were getting into it very, very -- lots of concentration going on. And then this is a big slide of just all of our collaborations that we've been with district-wide, community-wide. This isn't all extensive. I know I left off a couple of things by accident, but just many, many collaborations so far. Like we have our AIPAC, you guys, Tucker and I are on a lot of the skip teams, so helping with that. The specific ones are the deeper learning, upgrade, recruitment, and induction, authentically engaged families. We're playing a big part in the new ELA standards curriculum revamp, so we're helping with that as well. Curriculum in general, we're working with them a lot. Spark Museum, working with Heather, she reached out right away. Equity and Engagement, of course, Employees of Color Resource Group. We got that grant from Mayo to get the Medicine Garden going at Dakota, and then our -- the master gardeners here in Rochester are going to help us get that started in the spring, so we're excited for that. History Center of Olmsted County has reached out just about land acknowledgements, and then their goals for the year, they're inviting us in it as well. And then just some professional development done at Luther College for those expiring teachers. So we've been asked to do lots of things, not just in Rochester, but in the surrounding communities as well. And just some more pictures. The first one is at a college fair up in the cities, and then the little one was Tucker in Oklahoma presenting, and then the last one was us at the Mayo Culture Day at the beginning of the year, where we had a table and just introduced ourselves to different Some upcoming professional learning.
Yeah, this weekend actually is the National Education Association's Leadership Summit, and I'm going to present a workshop out there again with actually one of my daughters, Emily. Some of you know her, graduated from John Marshall. She's working in Salt Lake City, but we're teaming up to do a presentation out there. Again, we have some representative from Rochester that'll be joining us at that conference.
And then we will both be attending MIA in the middle of April, and I'm also going to the Leadership, but I'm not fancy that Kim is presenting, I just get to go with him as best as we can, because Tucker is amazing to have. And then our last slide is kind of just our goals moving forward. These are both our own, but then also tying with AIPAC. These ones are kind of, like I said, mostly Tucker's and ICE, but they still kind of tie into our concurrency discussion as well. So the big one is professional development for staff, enhance collaboration with more -- with Dakota Middle School, increasing student connections, expand community collaboration, resources in all school buildings, building American Indian Parent Advisory Committees in every school, so every school represented on the AIPAC Committee. And then my -- one of my main goals is to be able to have a professional development where I don't have to give a 20, 30-minute history lesson before I can actually give the teachers teaching strategies to best reach our Native students. So that's one of my -- my personal goals, but then I wouldn't have a job, so we'll see.
Yeah, so I hear from teachers, I would love to incorporate some of this into my curriculum, but I'm not sure how, and I don't want to do it disrespectfully. So I think they're on the edge there, and they're kind of excited when we provide resources to them, but we've also seen that they need more than just being handed the resources. They need a little extra help getting it started and doing it respectfully. So that's, I guess, a big part of our work as well, is helping teachers feel confident in introducing these into their subjects.
Thank you. Board members, any questions? Director Barlow.
Thank you for very thorough and engaging presentation in helping me, us, the community better appreciate how far we've come, but how far there still is yet to go. I was somewhat intrigued. I won't really ask the question, but I do see the value in the emphasis of identity for the students to have that greater sense of identity, the inclusive aspect as well, and then the tribal connection to allow an appreciation beyond oneself or one's own community. And I thought, well, that's -- those are life lessons for us all, if you will, though I understand the need for. And so, how well are -- do you think you're delivering on these very weighty, necessary areas? I suspect that for some, there may have been a phase of shaming, if you will, and/or potentially being embarrassed based on identity. And so how are you able to bridge those gaps and to, you know, create the sense of value and sense of we are someone, yes, and always have been, and you need to discover the story? So can you speak to any aspect of that?
It's -- it's quite a challenge, frankly, because our system was created, I think, more about competition and individual achievement than community achievement. So for us to try to help the students understand the value of that community you were just talking about is a struggle. A, because we're not on a reservation and they're not living in that community, so we're trying to create a sense of what that is like among many tribal people in Rochester. So we're, in the limited time we have, we're planting seeds. That's what I feel like we're doing, and hoping that they will take those and grow them on their own and in their family, and then reaching out to their tribal communities to really make those further connections. So I guess that's as much as I feel like that I've been able to accomplish anyway, is planting those seeds and hoping they'll grow.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Just kind of going off of that, I spent a lot of the time in elementary, so like I have our group monthly, and now they're starting to make a connection, like, oh, this is our Native group. You guys are Native too, like even though you're from -- you're Navajo, like you're still Native. So they're starting to make those connections themselves, but it first started with relationships. We didn't do that like the first day that we met. It was really just understanding who they are, like their own personal home identity, and then we're just now kind of starting to branch into like their tribal identities. So it's just spending a lot of time giving them the trust within themselves to find out what they like and who they are, and then teaching them a little bit more about where they come from.
Director Cook.
I'm curious about the collaboration with UCF. Can you say a little bit more about what's going on?
I just have a teacher reached out to me, and she had me come down and talk about my position here in Rochester, and then I kind of planted the seed about coming to do some of their student teachings up in Rochester, but also just kind of, she wanted the students to understand our Native students, and they don't really get a lot of that, they didn't have a specific course, so she just reached out and had me kind of talk about my job in Rochester and maybe plant some seeds for them to come up and also teach.
One of the items that you talked about when you were here for the AIPAC letter was the foundational characteristics of Indigenous education, and when you talk about Tucker planting seeds, you're looking at those again, I know it's part of your presentation tonight, but I'm struck, especially post-pandemic, how many of these are necessary for all of our students. That holistic approach, and I think it speaks a lot to what Director Barlow was asking about, you know, that integration. So I said, I've said it before, I'll say it again, you're a valuable resource, not just to our Native students, but to all of our students, because what you're bringing to the curriculum and to the culture of our schools is beneficial for all students, and we appreciate everything that you do. Yep? Thank you. Thank you. Thanks so much. Next item on the agenda is 4.04, Recognition of National School Social Work Week. So tonight, we are recognizing our school social workers. Social workers endeavor to work throughout our society to meet people where they are and help empower people to overcome barriers and reach the goals they wish to attain. All of our RPS schools have social workers on staff. Our RPS social workers touch the lives of our students in impactful ways every day, promoting student academic success by reducing social, emotional, economic, and environmental barriers to learning. RPS social workers work with students one-on-one in small groups or in the classroom to develop problem-solving, conflict resolution, and decision-making skills. They help students deal with difficult or crisis situations and improve interpersonal relationships with their peers. They help address barriers to school attendance. RPS social workers provide a link between school, home, and the community, connecting students and families to school and community-based resources for health, mental health, housing, food, and nutrition. And we would like to express our thanks on behalf of the district to our Rochester Public Schools social workers and recognize them during this National School Social Work Week from March 5th through 11th, 2023. And if you're out there watching, thank you. Next item is 4.05, Board Member Committee Updates. Does anyone have any reports from their committees or information they want to share? Director Barlow.
I'd like to. I wasn't able to present what I'm about to share now at our last board meeting. I was home ill. Coincidentally, though, I'll modify my presentation because Mayo High School will be presenting their skip later, and some of what I'll be sharing comes from our February monthly family engagement meeting. Just as a reminder, the goal of family engagement is to create effective partnerships that support students, families, and schools. And part of the spotlight emphasis for our February meeting was none other than Brenda Shamelin, the Student Resiliency Specialist, presenting Mayo High School and beyond, and I'll just briefly touch on a few items since they will be making a presentation later. What a wonderful example. They were willing to have what are called pop-up engagement events at different locations. We were able to see that in the form of their slide presentation, and how impactful it was in those various communities to include apartment complexes as well as mobile home parks, and how literally Mayo, Brenda and her group didn't wait for families or students to come to the school to serve them, they went out to where the families, students were, and met them where they were, and I thought that was so insightful. So again, kudos to Mayo for doing that. Looking more to hear about that during your presentation. And then finally, second point that I thought was so important separate from Mayo is that our Student Services Coordinator. of our student services coordinator who presented on what's called our RPS Bike Fleet. Don't know if you're aware of that or not, but we have 35 bicycles. And probably the most significant thing about that was how they have managed to include they, the coordinator has included students from right fit and real students in terms of maintaining, putting together these bicycles. I thought, wow, while all kids can benefit from that exposure, I thought these particular kids have an additional opportunity to, in spite of maybe why they're in the program, they are, they still can see that they can be involved, engaged, and do meaningful things. And so Dustin, I don't know if you're here or watching, or if the work can get back to you, keep up the good work, and I encourage schools to reach out. You know, he made it a point to say, these bikes are available. All schools have to do or teachers have to do is, you know, reach out and they can make it happen. And so that's my update. Thank you.
Great. Anybody else? So I know board members were invited to participate in the shadow of student opportunity, and I know we have an opportunity to share that at a leadership meeting later this week. I was able to go to Willow Creek, hi Millie, if you're out there watching, and spend the day with an eighth grader, and it was, any day in a school is great, but spending it with a number of eighth grade girls who are outspoken and are spirited and highly intelligent and fun, so I'm really glad we were all, and I know we're all going to share those thoughts together, but it's a great opportunity, and I know board members do it on their own. I also went and visited the literacy lab, and I know that we've scheduled an update on our literacy work in the district, but it was a room full of Kieran teachers that represented the elementary schools, and there was an elementary principal there and our literacy instructors, and just really diving into the craft of their work. Anybody who was in that room would not doubt that these teachers are the utmost professionals who are really looking to improve the instruction and the outcomes for our students in reading. So that's really a great opportunity. Kudos to the literacy lab and the people at Overland for the space, and we'll see what comes out of it when we have our literacy update later this spring.
I have a quick update from legislative. We have, Legislative Committee has an agenda item later on the agenda, so I won't go there, but just wanted to give a brief update on the resolution that the board passed involving safe gun storage. The committee is now working on rolling out the communication piece of that and getting that information out to our families, and so look for more on that in the community as we go forward.
Good. Thanks for the work that you've all been doing behind the scenes on that. Great. The next item is our consent agenda. Would any board member like any item removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration?
Move approval.
Rebecca? It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. We'll move on to our focus topics. We have one tonight from Mayo High School, the next in our series of our school comprehensive improvement plan presentations. Superintendent Pecal.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. And board members, I want to invite the team from Mayo to come on up and hopefully take your places, probably at the table here, and I think we have the right number of chairs, and if we don't, maybe we can pull one over. So everybody, unless Mr. Priggy, you're going to kind of stand there.
Manning the chair.
All right, you're manning it? Good. If that works, then that's great. Well, why don't we begin by giving you an opportunity to introduce yourselves? I see Ms. Sam has got some nameplates. Thank you very much for that. As board members are well aware, this year we are moving between updates for the board on our district-wide systems change work and then deep dives into the improvement work that is going on in our individual schools. So tonight, we are thrilled to have the chance to look at one of our comprehensive high schools, Mayo High School, and so I'll turn it over to you, Troy. Priggy's our principal there, and it'd be great maybe to begin and just introduce the team, and then we can jump in.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Nathan, Directors of the Board, Superintendent Pecal, Cabinet Members. I'm going to first introduce our last powerhouse of the night here. So we have Brenda Shamblin, she's our resiliency specialist, Chris Sanborn, ESP, aka public speaker, like whatever. This is right in her wheelhouse, so we had to drag her here, but she is one of our veteran ESPs and does an amazing job, and Carrie Ecker-Hawkinson, Assistant Principal, and then Kristi Kinnenberg, Social Studies Teacher. There's one thing this group all has in common. They are master relationship builders, and as one legendary principal once told me, is to surround yourself with really, really great people and then get out of their way, and that's basically what I've done with this group, and they're going to share a ton of things with you as we get going here. But first off, our demographics, I think many of you are well aware of that. We have over 200 staff and 1,856 very creative students at Mayo, which keep us on our toes. And one thing that we didn't highlight in there is, you know, our graduation rate is ascending. One of the few schools that that's happening, and we're getting close to 95%. I'm not sure how COVID is going to, you know, uncover some of those numbers for us here in the future, but we're very proud of what the things that we're doing at Mayo, and this group has some amazing things to share with you. And I wish our first goal was how to clear out a boardroom, because we have been very successful with that, if that were the case, but I am going to get out of the way. They are going to take it over, and I think it's Carrie.
Great. So our goal development was led by our leadership team at Mayo High School. We called an S for S team, our Spartans for Spartans, and it's made up of a variety of members of our, of our school. We have administrators, counselors, ESPs, teaching staff. Brenda's on our team, just so that we have all of the voices and perspectives represented when we're making decisions about Mayo High School. So we met, of course, this summer during the skip retreat and developed two goals. Our first goal is to significantly increase the percentage of all students who report that they are present and engaged in class as measured by the Classroom Engagement Scale and the Panorama Survey, the class tool that we use for evaluation of teachers, and then attendance data. A first thing that we're very proud of is that we had 1,424 of our students take the survey, so it was quite representative of all demographics and let our student voice. We chose this goal because as we are transitioning back to the building, it feels very normal to be present in a building, but we are recovering from COVID in many ways, and our leadership team really felt like we needed to make sure that we had a rich learning environment for our students, something that they wanted to come to every single day. So we have had two professional development days in the last week and a half, actually, where we got to prepare not only for this presentation, but to let our staff really dig into where we are. So we have some numbers to share with you today. Thirty-two percent of our students reported to being invested and attentive in their classrooms. I do want to honor the voice of our teachers when we shared this data. That 32% is made up of students who answered almost always and frequently, but if you added the sometimes in there, you would get another 35 to 40% of our students, about another 450 students, depending on what question it was, who would answer that question sometimes, which we're okay with. But in one of our presentations, we shared with staff, the students who are always feeling great in our building and frequently feeling great, like this is stuff that we're doing very naturally. If we want this to feel good for all students, we need to look at the 100 to 200 students who answer never or hardly ever in multiple categories. Fifty-four percent of our students report having strong social connections with teachers beyond the classroom, and 66% of the students reported having high perceptions of teaching and learning from our teachers, so great pedagogical strategies. We also looked at our attendance data. This was pulled from Educlima. We thought we'd be able to read the TV in front, and I am turning into someone who needs to wear glasses, but not quite yet. So we broke it down by month, day of the week, I believe, and maybe grade level. I'm not sure what our other one was. You can probably see that better than I can. And this is representative of our, is it right?
Ethnicity and race.
Oh, that's the last one thing. I couldn't remember.
One of the great ethnicities.
Yes, good. So you can see those percentages on there. Again, they're pretty consistent, regardless of how we're measuring it, and there are a few things that we can't control, right? We can't control when students have sporting activities, illness, doctors, dentist appointments, emergencies. So we want to talk tonight about our work, about the things that we can control, which really are those unexcused absences, which sometimes feel like you can't control them, but we're doing a lot of great work to work with those students who, for whatever reason, aren't feeling like the classroom is the place that they want to be. So I'm going to turn it over to Chris to talk a little bit about what our educational support professionals do with some of those students.
We have a great ESP team at Mayo High School. We work really hard and diligent into getting to know these students and getting connections with them, making relationships with them. We try to take time out to understand what they're going through and what struggles they're having of why they're not making it to their classrooms. We boost them up. We help them out. We always let them know we're here for them, and we try to get them encouraged and move on towards making their way to the classroom, and we do have success quite a bit with them, and I'm just proud of what our team does with our students.
And then we'll talk a little bit about, as we shared the data with our staff, a word cloud that represents what the staff feedback was on some of those things that are happening from their perspective on why students don't always make it to the classroom or engage in the classroom.
So I am our site staff development goal as well as a social studies teacher. I'd wear a few other hats in the building, but when we were planning for the 20th, we wanted teachers to be really reflective on, again, things they control. That was a really big part of it, but why maybe students aren't feeling as engaged or as supported in the classroom. And so we had them walk through the five whys, trying to find a root why, and then the most important part of that exercise was to find a solution that we can easily implement in the next 13 weeks, 13 weeks, but also hopefully carry it on into the next school year. As you can see up there, phones is a really, really big one that continued to come up, I think, in almost every group, because we did a bunch of breakout groups, but also the idea of COVID. We are, we have to be aware that we're still dealing with various effects from COVID, you know, at the high school level. We're going to continue to see this for about the next, you know, 10, 12 years and have different impacts as to the age level the kid was at when they were in online. So being aware of that, but then also the big one you see there is relevance, and I think more so than ever, and I don't know if it's social media or whatnot, but students really demand that idea of why is this an important class? Why is this important formation? So what can we do as staff to make students feel like what they're learning in the classroom is relevant and can be applied, not even 10 years down the road or five years down the road, but in the next few months for them? And then as we, as I say, and then, so we have some levers. So I'm going to, a little anecdotal, but also what I have listened to with other staff. So one of my solutions to the cell phone issue in my classroom, besides going back to making sure I'm implementing the policies and, you know, as much as it might annoy me to sometimes ask a kid to put away the phone, doing that for a couple weeks straight has really taken care of the phone issue in my classroom. But another strategy, a lot of teachers have shared with me, and it's one I use, is kind of a 45-5 situation where we'll instruct for 45 minutes and then have five minutes of whatever time is really what I call it. And what I have learned from that, and what I've shared with other teachers and other teachers have shared with me, is that's not just about letting kids have their phones, but that's a time for me as a teacher to be really intentional with getting to know my students. In that five minutes, I go and connect with kids that aren't the loudest in class, that don't always turn everything in on time, and some of it's like, hey, I need you to get this done, but a lot of it is like, hey, what are you looking at on TikTok? Like, what's the new trend? And like, you have TikTok? I'm like, yeah, the Tiki Talk. I'm on it for the cat content. Then they bring in cat content videos for me, or we'll break out in Uno Deck, or we play spoons in my classroom, which I'm very, very bad at compared to our high school students. But in doing that and forming more relationships with students than ever, and I've noticed that, I don't know if it's the fact that I'm instituting the cell phone policy more or if it's because students feel like they can connect with me more, they want to pay attention more in class, my engagement since mid-January where I had to really kind of rethink things has really gone up again. On a wider building level, one of the things I'm most proud of, and this is Amanda Burghat in the TOPS room and so many other staff members at Mayo put on a mental health awareness week a few weeks ago, and it was phenomenal. Students felt seen by the system. They felt like they had access to resources. They connected with other students that they didn't know were struggling with some of the same things they were struggling with. But I think one of the biggest takeaways I had watching that week and what I've watched unfold in my own classroom over the last few months is that together time. COVID disrupted together time for students in a very profound way that I think is easy for us to forget, and students were sitting knitting. Like, that's not something you'd associate high school kids were doing, but there was always a ton of kids at those knitting circles. Kids just want to connect again, and then finding ways to get them to connect, sometimes in the classroom, sometimes in the wider community, and Brenda's doing a fantastic job with some of those community pieces.
Yeah, we'll keep bragging about our school. We didn't really know how to organize everything. It's really, he said you have 10 minutes, and we were like, well, we could each talk for 10 minutes very easily. So we just want you to see some of the levers, like things that we know we can intentionally do. There's a lot of things that just happen naturally. Mayo is very big, but I think you would be so surprised walking through our hallways, really how connected, how many smiles are taking place, how many conversations are taking place with students and with staff, student to student, staff to staff, staff to student, just because we are really working hard to have a collaborative Spartan community. We do PBIS lessons every single week. I've been at Mayo, I think, eight or nine years now. It was a district initiative, you know, 10 to 15 years ago, and the conversation was how do we bring this to a high school? And I supported it a little bit from a district level, so when I got to Mayo, the team was like, well, you're going to do PBIS at the high school. I mean, it isn't everyone walking down the hallway with quiet feet and whisper voices, right? We really talk about what is your impact at Mayo High School. Every PBIS lesson starts like that. What is your impact? Every day you need to think about how you're being safe, respectful, and responsible. Our lessons, I mean, we linked all of this for you to look at, are very intentionally planned about what's going on in our school community, what kind of activities do we have going on, how can we celebrate everyone? So I think this came kind of from the board recognitions that happen just, you know, by season. Every single week in our PBIS lessons, the last slide that anyone, a club advisor, a student, a staff member can contribute to is celebrating any accomplishment that has come, you know, through a student or group's way, just so that it's an ongoing recognition, and it's about all of the things that our students are doing. Will brought attention to me, one of our students who developed a mental health app, so she's being recognized for that, and it's something that, right, she's learned through pathways at school but is now bringing to the greater community. And the greatest thing about those PBIS lessons is that we have students coming and saying, hey, can I do a lesson on this, or can our group do a lesson on this piece of work that we're doing within our team or our club, and it just has a lot of, a lot of power. We're doing the polar plunge next week at Mayo High School. That's what this week, week's lesson is going to be about. You're all welcome to come and take the plunge.
I'll be there.
Dr. Pecal is in this week's video, so we've really taken something that really set it up.
And I'm going in the water.
Yes. It's going to be clear water. At an elementary level, and it really is about, and we talk and live and breathe PBIS at Mayo High School because it's about the impact that students have. And we wanted to make, right, like, not just in the classroom feeling good, but some of the things that we're doing in our broader, outside of the classroom spaces, so Brenda and Chris can talk about some of our lunchtime activities and outside of school activities that we do at Mayo.
So thank you, Dr. Barlow, for the shout out, and that's such a good segue into our community events, but first I'm going to talk about the lunchtime activities that last year with the longer lunch hours, we decided we need to engage our students in a different way and as many as possible. So we started with some lunchtime activities, and that we've continued, even though the lunch hours are shorter, we've still been able to do a lot of great things. We have, the gym is available some of the lunch hours. We open up the auditorium. We watch movies on Fridays during March Madness. We'll watch basketball games, and so of course, that's just some of our students, and so then we have other ways to engage, air dry clay, canvas painting. We did a really cool project in November where students could create a card, any kind of card, a holiday card, a winter card, and I was able to deliver 50 homemade cards to one of our local nursing homes, and that was super exciting, and since then they've reached out. Can we collaborate and do some other things together that could include students? Another lunchtime activity that we started this year, which has been wildly popular, is karaoke, and you can imagine, but the greatest thing about that, and Superintendent Pecal, I think with those videos you've been doing for middle school and high school, this would be a great segue into now you could come and sing and ask other students how they feel listening.
Careful what you suggest.
But the great thing is, is we do it right in the lunchroom, so maybe some of those students who just want to sit with their friends and not do some of these other activities, they are participating, they're cheering, they're, and they're coming up and singing. At first, really hesitant, but now kind of fighting over the microphone, so. So that's just a few of the things that we've done for our lunchtime activities. The common theme here, engagement and relationships, and that's what I feel like are where we're at with all of the things that we're trying to do, so. So some of our community events, so the, we do several community events a year, we try different things to engage. A common one we have done is at Oak Terrace Estates at Parkside. Last year, we got a grant and were able to do inflatables, which was fun. We were also able to offer something besides cheese pizza, we had tacos in Salbusa, which was, of course, super fun and exciting. And so, and then we also did one at Friendship Place, Ben Franklin. And in addition to feeding them, which is always popular, we also bring resources, whether, we've brought Skyward Support, the Public Library joins us at many of our events, public health, and, yeah, some other community partners. And then we also bring food items, so non-perishable food items and share as at will. Let's see, are there any? Oh, yes, so this is, you might recognize Sheena there in the middle on the pitch on the right. She was here tonight, it was her daughter, Jeriana. And it was Sheena that approached us and said, can you come to us? We'd really, we need this information, but not everybody is comfortable going into the buildings. And so we reached out to all three high schools, all three high schools were represented. Brian Bothin, and we had, so we had bilinguals there, and we just, we set up a table, it was very simple. We put it together in less than a week, and we were there for an hour and a half. And we just engaged with people as they, I mean, we were walking around in the parking lot too, just to, to, to let them know that we were there. And, and that was, that all came from Sheena. She handed out flyers, she communicated with the gates, and it came together really quickly. And lastly, we had a holiday party. So we, we coordinate, we also partner with our feeder schools, so Willow Creek and Ben Franklin and all, oh, well, we have lots of feeder schools. And so one of the things we did is in our events at Oak Terrace and Parkside, we're really creating that relationship with Jill and Lucinda, who are the managers there. And so they invited us to be part of their holiday party, like, could you bring food? And I'll provide gifts and other things for families. And so that was great, and had huge turnout, like, standing room only. We didn't have enough chairs or tables, or, I mean, it's by far the best. So instead of us coming up with the ideas, you let us know what you need and we'll partner with you, so.
And so, I'm going to, Kristy, do this one a little bit too. So there's a lot of words on here, but again, as we shared, the professional development that we did the last two months was, or two weeks, was to really talk about where are we? To put these goals right in front of our staff again, now that our data is back, to talk about it, and what our, our ideas that we can use to have solutions for the things that we can control. And we threw it kind of all on there because we have continued to use this feedback with our staff, like, this is not a one and done. You're telling us this, and we're moving on to next month's PD. We're going to live and breathe the skip goals. You'll see later that we are kind of thinking about how do we refine the ones that we have this year because we think they're important? And then get into some of the achievement goals for next year and the SEL work, which, again, I think we're doing a lot of, but delving into it a little bit deeper. And so these were some of the pieces that staff provided as to bigger things, like, right, that have to go beyond the goals. A few of them are system-wide, so if you read through a few of them, some of our staff think that our students might be more engaged if we turn our course registration guide and curriculum upside down. There are fewer choices for ninth and 10th graders to explore who do they want to be when they grow up? Because we are pretty rigid in ninth and 10th grade about the credits and courses you have to take. And then by your senior year, you really are only required, if you follow the path, to take a government class and then a semester of an English four course. And so, like, we're not sure we're absolutely, you know, preparing for some rigorous post-high school careers, whether it's, you know, college or a profession. And so our staff said, like, could we take a look at that? Well, we're sharing that with you because that's something that sometimes starts here and thinking about that. And that's not a, you know, this is the first time high school teachers have talked about that, really flipping the opportunity for students to explore. The 45-15 calendar or 50-10 calendar have been thrown out there. We know that we have populations of students who are coming with, you know, different needs and the three months off in the summer. You know, is that really the best way for us to keep our students in positive and supportive places throughout their lives? Some of the things that they thought about, just from our own building?
You know, another one, looking at really making sure that we're, even in the classroom, when we're talking about post-high school, that we're using post-high school. We're not saying when you go to college, because a lot of students don't want to go to college. Some of them can't go to college and they feel excluded. So just some of that language change that is easy to make, acknowledging students for going into the trades, kind of the way we acknowledge some of our athletes that sign with colleges. Having that focus on, success doesn't look the same on everyone, and we need to celebrate what success looks like for everyone. And it's okay if you don't know what that means when you are in high school, just know that these are options available for you. I think one of the biggest things focusing on though is that ideal relevancy in the classroom and making sure that students feel like the curriculum they're getting is something that they can utilize. As a social studies teacher, super easy for me, pull up, read an article, boom, in the classroom. For other content, it can be a little bit harder, and that's even in that conversations with our colleagues of how we can support them. And I joke with my students about this, I'm also serious, but when they're like, well, what does math serve me? I'm like, well, as a social studies teacher, I should be anti-math, but I'm not. And I'll tell them, I'm like, I loved algebra, I hated geometry, but unfortunately, the math I use the most as an adult is a geometry, because every time I do something for my house, I have to do geometry. And they're like, really? I'm like, it's the most annoying thing about adulthood, I'm not going to lie. But just even little things like that, so students can see, maybe not the big picture, big systems of things, but the little ways that what they're learning in the classroom can impact them. One of the big things being stressed too is this idea of choice and making informed choices, that it might, you might be thinking about 10 years from now, but every little choice you make is based off of information you're receiving. So how are you taking in that information? How do you deem if that information's reliable? And then how do you make that decision based off of that information? Working those skills that are much more important to students sometimes than who did what in what year, but then we can tie in who did what in what year with that decision-making process. Utilizing technology, not making technology be the demon, is another thing that students have made well very clear. And other staff I've heard from have asked, how can we better incorporate technology into our classroom? To teach students how to use it as a tool that can help them gain success, not just as something to scroll through when they're bored. And developing PD around that to help staff so they can help students with it.
And our second goal, as I shared at the beginning, was we're focusing on how students are feeling when they're coming into the building. We also wanted to recognize that our staff have also not all been together for a number of years. I mean, even when we got back into the building, we were still really isolating ourselves for, you know, health safety. So we had 132 teaching staff take our Panorama Survey, I think it was like 90% very proud of that, and then 35 support staff members who took it. And again, like, just like I said, our data is showing that our staff are not feeling as connected as we would like to be, and we want to make sure that we're doing the intentional work with it. I wanted Chris to talk a little bit more about the difference in our teaching staff, the number of, the number of teaching staff that reported that they felt like they were valued members of our school community of 58%, which is a little different than our non-instructional or support staff reported.
I know I have talked with various ESP workers there, maintenance, cafeteria, and talked to them about what they felt like what Mayo High School represented, represented, sorry. They didn't feel like that they were an employee at Mayo High School. They felt like they were more of a team member, that we work together as a family. And our main goal was to be there for each other, to support each other, and to be there for our students and to make their goals come true in life. We just feel like it's a very good environment, we are so proud of our administrators and all staff, they just work together, pull together.
And similar to what we did with the student goal, we also asked teachers kind of why they were feeling they were, they were feeling, and very clearly, the winner on this one was time. Obviously, for high school teachers, losing the 50-minute lunchtime has hit them hard. They've been very loud about that, probably just as loud, if not louder, than the students have been about it. But recognizing it's not just that idea of how much time they have in the day, but how we utilize that time. Our two in-person PD days these last two weeks were amazing in ways that I didn't realize they would be. But the biggest takeaway that we had from it was, they wanted time to be together. Very similar to, I think, what students are experiencing, but they wanted time to talk about what they're seeing in their classrooms, time to problem solve about what they're seeing in the classrooms. They wanted time to be together because they feel isolated. Mayo High School, big teaching staff, also, as much as I love the realm building because it's an indoor track, it also is isolating because unless you're kind of right next to someone in the hallway, you don't always see people on the other side of the building. There's not clusters the way other buildings have it. So how do we build in then that time for staff to intentionally meet with each other besides just the PLC time in the morning? Also looking at, how do we help with workload? How do we help teachers feel that not overwhelmed? And again, some of that was recognizing that we can be very overwhelmed when we think of things we can't control, so then pull back and look at what we can control within our environment to help us not feel that overwhelming sense of drowning. And that idea that, again, we're, we are a team, and if you feel like you're in survival mode, reach out. Staff members, everyone on staff should at least have a couple of people they can reach out to. And again, especially for maybe newer members to the building, it's really easy to feel isolated, so making sure we're intentional in helping teachers, especially those who feel like they're only in survival mode.
And so when we put together our levers, and some of these came from our S4S meeting in the, in the summer, we are very intentional about at staff meetings, getting people, sitting at tables with people that they maybe didn't know when they walked into the room, doing little icebreakers. Those are always very popular with teachers. We always remind them that this is how the students feel when you throw the icebreaker out. But it is really helping because, as Kristy said, we are kind of laid out by departments in our hallways. And so if you come in and you're working really hard with kids and teaching in that room for six periods of the day, you know, you have to do some work to get out and meet the English department or the math department. So some of the pictures that you can see here, we start off at the beginning of the year doing staff pictures all together, each department. We hang those up in our building so everybody coming in can see it. We played games at the beginning of the school year in our staff meetings and did a staff picnic, just, again, really being intentional. We've done some family fun days on Sundays, so families can come in and use our pool and our gym, get to know more about the people that we spend time with outside of our school building. We have a staff resiliency room, I'm going to give Levi Lundak some credit for this because he came to me last year and said, I know that you're all about this. And Troy, who talks all the time, that's the chair up there in one of the corners, I'm not great with direction. But Troy always tells our staff to take care of themselves, and, you know, it's a really good kind of catchphrase too, and we hope everybody does it. I'm sure everybody in here does a really good job at that too, you run out of time. So we have a room up in, on the second floor that was generously gifted some money from a family at Mayo High School. We have a massage chair in there, a diffuser, a salt lamp. We have some other things that teachers are always running around the building trying to find, glasses wipes, Tylenol, and you don't have to go and waste time finding that anymore, it's right there. We have a kind of yoga center in there, so you can go in. The Phoenix Academy just made us some Adirondack chairs, so you can go in and have a little zen moment. And then we're capitalizing on some of our staff's strengths. So an art teacher does some monthly art activities and exercises in that room. We have a teacher who does yoga, we had some succulent replanting a couple of months ago. So different activities that, you know, kind of capture all of the different ways that we recharge and help ourselves as well. But then that's stuff that you can do during the day. You don't have to do this outside of your workday, come in during your prep. A lot of people are using it before and after school. If you clicked on that, I believe it brings you to our Google Sheet, which maybe I didn't give you access to, but it's there. Staff go in, it's anonymous, and they say, this is how I'm feeling right now, one to five. They tell us what they use. The Resonance Chair, we also have a little fridge in there that has like caffeinated beverages and water, if you just need a little pick-me-up during the day. So you tell us what you used, and then you say how you felt when you left the room. And it is getting used constantly. People are coming in on the weekends, but they can use it during the day. So really putting, you know, kind of our, our actions right there. We really do care about our staff, we know that they can't take care of their students if they don't feel like they're taken care of, not only just in good, healthy habits, but in the relationships that they're building with one another. We have a lot of pictures because we are really proud of them.
And we would really like to take care of the board. We know we're, we're getting into your break time right now, it's after seven, but does anyone have any questions? We just have a lot going on, we invite you to come out whenever you want, we'll take you around. Mayo is a great place, we have great kids, we have awesome staff, it's, it's a wonderful place to, to work, so.
Board members, questions or comments? Well, oh, Director Workman.
It's just, it's really just a comment, this was just amazing to hear. Not only what you do for your staff, which I was thinking, okay, I need to visit Mayo High School and spend some time there, that might be helpful, but also what you're doing for the students in terms of making them feel that they really are a part of the community and that you're listening to student voice as well when they say what they need. And this is, I'm feeling this is just exactly the kind of thing that you want to see happening, put you on the spot here, so you have to say yes?
Yes.
But, and I would also like to thank Mr. Priggy for my student shadow day a couple of weeks ago. Was a junior, and first hour I said, what's your next class? And he said, orchestra. So I felt really back at home, and if you haven't had an opportunity to hear the Mayo High School orchestra, oh my gosh, it was just amazing, just absolutely amazing. So, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay, I would say one thing about your pictures. You've, you've mentioned a few times that you take a lot, but one of the things that you do well is you put your pictures out into the world through social media. And I think that that is one thing that our community can't get enough of, because if you, if you have kids in school, your kids aren't telling you necessarily what's happening. If you don't, you want to, you want to see this energy, and you can feel the energy through the kinds of things you post. And something must be working when during your Gofa week, you were able to allow students to bring their books to school in whatever container that they wanted, and one brought a canoe. And if you're able to manage a student moving through the hallways with a canoe without a lot of disruption, you are doing something right when it comes to student relationships and building a, a community where people can have fun, but you can still do the, the work that needs to be done, so Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. I would love to hear, and please don't overthink this, there's no right answer, what course are we not teaching at Mayo High School that you think students would really, really gravitate to? That, that comes to mind, I'm really interested in all of you, just whatever comes to your mind.
So I'm going to, I, one of the classes I teach is ethnic studies, and it kind of pairs off very well with what was described by our American Indian liaisons with the idea of identity. I think some sort of ninth grade class, a little bit of crash course, but also something with identity to help kids really root themselves. But also even tying a little bit of, especially because social studies will be adding ethnic study standards in the next couple of years, maybe tying some of those standards in the class so that students' perspective feels heard from the moment they enter high school. They feel like their stories are going to be told within our classrooms, and so that students have a little bit of a knowing of where other kids might be coming from, the cultures they're coming from, the traditions they're coming from. I think a class that wraps up some of those skills, but also some of that identity and community work would be a phenomenal class.
Any others?
One of the things that we've talked about recently, we do give our students an elective credit for being on Student Government, they have a class during the day. Our TOPS Room students who support that room get a credit as do our SOS members. So we've just been kind of playing around, like, we have study halls and open periods that, I mean, our students just want to take, they want to get better. So could we think about some way that our students could do something, like, almost like independent studies, but collectively with a staff member to build those relationships where they're working on some kind of project, but to the betterment of Mayo High School, right? So they're giving back and they're feeling connected. We met with a student last week who was in ninth grade and just said, I don't really like it here, you know, I don't feel like I belong. And so we were, we were talking about, well, let's get you in the SOS room, you're not going to study hall anyway, you know, Perry with Miss Hamblin. And it just got us thinking about, what else can we generate from students? My son said it should be a skateboarding park course, so I wasn't really sure about, but it is a circle. But just that kind of thing, where students can come to school and really look forward to something, but then it's improving our programming in our building, so.
Thank you.
I would say like a hybrid course of some kind where our kids can get out into the community and connect. We're doing, you know, we're bringing in, do employment, people coming in, job fairs. A lot of our kids were hired on the spot when they came out, and just some sort of hybrid where they can go out and still connect with some of those, some of those businesses that aren't that aren't real connected to schools. Some sort of hybrid course, and that would, you know, maybe a couple of days in the classroom and maybe three days out, you know, working with the community.
That's awesome too, thank you.
Mentorship, that's what came to mind, is that they can go to the, the elementary schools and work with, if they're interested in working with children, that they have opportunity to do that in a variety of ways, also for, I have credit or whatever, so.
Anything else Board members? I want to cut you off with your questions, but thank you so much for your presentation.
Amazing work.
Thank you.
Go Spartans.
And we are recessed for 10 minutes. School board is back in session at 7:17 PM. Our next area is monitoring, 7.01 High School Environmental Science Course implementation. Board members, a reminder, this is a monitoring item and it's not presented as a resolution. Usually the board takes action on high school, on high school courses when we approve changes to the course registration guide in the fall. But thank you for coming and giving us an update. Superintendent Pecat.
Thank you Chair Nathan and Board members. As you know, this work is heavily led by our Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Agbamu, and FA has asked Heather Willman and Kyle Casper to give an update on an effort, an ongoing effort to implement an important new requirement that has been approved at the state level. Thank you, thanks for being here.
All right. Well, we're excited to give you a bit of an update on where we're at in the process. We wanted to start with the idea of what's changing, because we have some things that are changing that are causing this change for our students. So in the 24-25 school year, our freshmen will take an environmental science course. Kind of exciting when you think about the superintendent in the halls and when you ask students what they were most concerned about.
Yeah.
I think almost every student was talking about global warming, except for maybe one.
Two cellphone.
Okay, two, two cellphones and then global warming. So it seems like our students are very excited about this topic. So the reason for the change is because we have new academic standards that require earth and space science. And so we're really thinking about how do we meet those standards? So we had a leadership group made up of principals, teachers, district leaders, and they looked at those standards and then made a recommendation to place them in grade nine. We did take a little bit more time with this course, and so we have this year, this summer, and then we'll have the following year to do some work, and then we'll implement in 24-25, which has been really helpful as Kyle and I have worked with the standards and the teachers, and it's a very different methodology in terms of our new standards, and so it's been helpful to have that, that additional time. So a couple more things about what's changing. So as we said, in the 24-25 school year, our students will be required to take environmental science, biology, and then it'll be chemistry or physics in order to meet the standards. But we know that we have a very science-focused community, and many of our students will want to take both chemistry and physics, and so they'll be able to do this, they'll be able to register for this. And so we've really looked at, what are some sample schedules and how can we make sure that students have that opportunity? The other change is the 3D learning, and Kyle's going to talk a little bit more about what that 3D learning looks like, but it's much, much more integrated and much less, I'm going to learn about biology here, and then I'm going to learn about chemistry here. There's a lot more integration.
And as Heather said, this graphic represents the change to the three-dimensional learning. The old standards, state standards, were the 2009 standards, and they had a nature of science section followed by the content. The new standards, the 2019 standards, are based on the next generation's science standards, the national standards. And really the task they set out to do was take those skills that scientists and engineers do and take the ways of thinking and also the content and embed those things together in the three dimensions. And that's what's here in the graphic. You see the identity piece pointing at those science skills because the students are practicing those skills as way, as the science and engineering practices, as well as the cross-cutting concepts, which are the ways of thinking that scientists do, such as thinking in patterns, cause and effect, all of those things. And then on the other piece is the interest, and that is the content, that's the physical science, the biology, as well as the earth and space standards.
So as we started this process, we asked our teachers and our leaders that were working with us, "What are your hopes and dreams for this course? What do you want this course to be?" Because we know that you can go through the motions of meeting the standards and checking the box, but we really wanted to think about, like, what if we thought differently? What could this class be for our students? So you can see the things that, that pop up. High rigor. Our teachers talked a lot about wanting this to be kind of a capstone from their middle school experience, and then launching students into even more of a scientific journey. They wanted local phenomena, so they wanted students to be able to see the relevance. And I was thinking about the connection when the Mayo team presented, and you could see relevance popping up as something that the teachers were looking for and that the students were looking for. They also wanted more of a concrete way for students to think about science and then continue that journey. So those are the things that we're kind of keeping in the forefront of our mind as we start to look at curriculum and resources and materials. How do we make sure that we meet those goals and the things that we were really hoping this course could be? So this is just the brief course description, so this is what will go in the guide. And as you can see, that last sentence is probably the most important, a high importance placed on earth systems, the impact of human involvement, and the relationship to our local community. So we really want this to be a class that is unique to Rochester, focusing on the earth and space science standards, but making sure that we're using all of the things that are unique in our area. We have the beauty of having Karst, which is something that's very unique to our region, so we think about what are the things that we could do in Rochester that we maybe can't learn about other places?
And so this is our current team members, and you can see the departments from our large high school programs are represented, as well as some other team members to consider all learners. And this is a multi-year process, so this is the team that's currently working, although there's plenty, been plenty of other representatives from other schools and, and other people. This is just who's currently working on that.
We're lucky to have some earth science folks, so we have a good mix of biology, chemistry, I don't know if we have any physics, right? Yeah, I think we have one physics, and then we also have some earth science folks. So it's been a good collaboration in that regard.
So here's a bit of the timeline that started a few years ago, and it started with really just what is phenomena-based instruction? And so phenomena could be anything, it could be a weather event, it could be an illness, it could be a geologic feature, it could be how to keep your cellphone from breaking. So those pieces are meant to engage students, they're meant to be relevant to what's going on, and they're also meant to be something that the group can figure out together with, with an easy entry point, but with a very high ceiling that students can take in a lot of different directions. So we started with that, and then as we progressed, we started to get more familiar with the standards, unpacking those, seeing what's involved in those three dimensions for that journey. Then we took those pieces and started putting together some planning guides to prioritize learning, starting to put together some drafts of the scopes and scope and sequence. And then we're continuing with more work with the three-dimensional learning, as well as now that we have a better foundation and understanding of the standards, selecting some resources that would be a good match for those. And that's going to continue on until next year where we can get more into developing some common assessments, as well as adding the local pieces that Heather was speaking to.
All right. So our current work, right now we're looking at curricular finalists, so we feel like because we'll have a variety of folks teaching this course, especially the first year, as we change sequence, we want to be sure we have a good, solid foundation for them. So we're looking at EDC and then Activate Learning EarthCom as two core resources to help us. We'll look at recommending one of these for purchase to support the course, and we want to be sure that we have that recommendation well in advance so that the teachers have time to look at it, review the materials, do some planning with it. Then we're digging deep into storylines. You've probably heard a little bit of storylines last year, I think we had a couple of teachers come and speak about storylines. And so there's two that we're really digging into right now. One is on polar ice caps, and what's the other one Kyle?
Discovering new worlds, as in what other planets exist that could be, and how they compare to our earth.
So we're kind of thinking about which of those fit best with the scope and sequence. And then we'll continue to develop and revise those plans. We want to make sure we have quarterly plans, common assessments, those pieces in place so the teachers feel comfortable with this. And then we'll continue to collaborate and look for professional development opportunities. I think one other piece that we want to build into next year is engaging with our community partners. We have lots of folks that have ideas for things that they would like to see us work with them on, and so Amy helped me a little bit a couple of years ago as we were starting to launch this. And so we'd really like to bring those folks back to the table and think about, well, how, how could that plug into this course development? So that's where we're at right now. We'll open it up for your questions.
Board members, Director Marvin.
First of all, I'm so grateful that you and others have been so willing to listen to teaching staff, especially the science teachers, and go slowly into this, because I think what you're developing is really exciting. Quick question, if a student is, say, a junior or a senior during the 24-25 school year, can, and has taken the other classes, can that student take this one?
That's a good question. They might be able to, we'll probably, probably have to work with the registrars to see.
I mean, I'm not-
What's the, what's the number of seats that we would have open? But it would be available in that 24-25- But it would be available in that 24, 25 school year, so we'd probably get all of our folks that need the requirement, but then they might be able to engage in that. And we do have AP Environmental, as well as an environmental awareness course that usually runs at John Marshall. So many students that are really interested in environmental science, that kind of thing, do tend to look at those electives, but there might be an opportunity for students.
Thank you. Director Cook.
I have a bias here because I was an astronomy major once upon a time, but I think this is a huge opportunity potentially, because about the most powerful force that you can come up with to motivate education and to make it just fun is curiosity. And it is, it is hard to look up at the night sky and not just be blown away with awe and wonder and just being curious. So, and the beauty of it is, if you are getting into planetary science and planet formation, you just trip over all kinds of different Earth science that's interesting and relevant, and you're just so curious to figure out, like, oh, my gosh, are there other planets? And there's so many questions that you can't help but learn a whole bunch of stuff. So, yeah, exciting. I just keyed off right away when you mentioned the search for other worlds or whatever it was. It's really, really exciting, so cool stuff.
One of the things that Kyle led us through last session was looking at the standards and then trying to group them. And it was super interesting how all of us sorted them in very different ways, based on kind of where we see connections. So I do think there's so much to be said for this interdisciplinary, more connected approach, because I think that there's a way that we can really follow the questions instead of following the scope and sequence, and this is the next unit. So that's the idea behind this.
So does anybody remember the last time there was a change in state standards that required us to add another graduation credit?
Is this a pop quiz?
No, I'm just, I can't remember.
If you don't know.
In all the years. Right, so I guess my point is, this is the first time this has happened in a long time, and with change sometimes comes consternation. And as this woman alluded to, we are a community that has been very used to science-focused students, starting with biology, then chemistry, then physics, and then other advanced courses. So I think we just want to make sure everybody understands that this is something that we are required to do by state statute. And in the answers to the questions, which are available in our board packet, you are kind enough to do some research on other districts. So do you want to maybe compare our approach to other districts so that the community understands how we're, what path we're on?
Yeah, absolutely. So the state doesn't say which courses you have to have, but they tell us that we have to make sure that the students meet all of the standards. And there are new Earth and Space Science standards at the high school level. So that's something that's new with these new standards. Some districts are implementing right now, there are a few that implemented maybe a year ago, and then there are quite a few that are implementing in either the following year or 24, 25. As we researched to see, well, what are other districts doing with these standards? We really, we haven't found another district that isn't placing them at the ninth grade level. There was some question, could we just embed the standards into our biology, chemistry, and physics so we didn't have to make a change? But there are actually more Earth and Space Science standards than there are biology standards. So biology is a full-year course, so we could not find a way to do that well and make sure that the students really could show their understanding. So every district that we've looked at has placed them in ninth grade. Many districts already had a physical science course at ninth grade or something else at ninth grade, so it was a little bit different for them. But that's really where the bulk of the districts, I don't know if I know of any that have placed them in another spot.
And I emphasize that because I don't want the opportunity that this course offers us to get lost in change, because I think we, as you said, could be sparking more scientists that may not have been scientists but for the experience in this course. So you also answered some questions about how someone who's got that science bug can continue to take the fundamental courses and then advanced courses. Will you be providing that as part of the course registration guide or at the eighth grade nights so that people can sort of understand what path might be forward, or if it's different than something that maybe their older sibling had taken or other child?
Yeah, so the registrars and I kind of sat down and looked at, you know, what would happen if you were really biology-focused? And how can you make sure that you get biology, maybe anatomy and physiology, and possibly AP bio? And so we mapped that out so that parents and families can see, well, how can I still get to those higher levels of science? So we'll provide those sample schedules when students start to think about registering, because I think that's the question is, we have so many amazing science electives, we want to be sure that this doesn't change the number of students who can access those. So I think we have five different samples. One is, I love physics and I want to make sure I get to AP physics. One is, I'm all about biology. One is, I just love all the sciences and I want to be able to take, you know, these three APs. And we were really able to figure out a way that students could fit that in, just by planning ahead. So we'll make sure we provide those.
I really appreciated those, thank you. Board members, any other questions, comments? So this will be coming back to us as part of when we look at the course registration guide officially in the fall.
Yeah, because we still have, like, this year and the following.
Fall after the fall.
Probably give you another update or two, depending on.
Maybe we can play with the curriculum. All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
The next agenda item is 7.02, teacher position changes over the last decade. This is a follow-up to our last discussion on the budget parameters. Superintendent Pecow.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. And board members, as you know, this board has put us on a path to addressing a structural deficit that actually results from multiple factors. It results from state funding from the general fund not increasing by the rate of inflation. It results in inadequate funding for services for students with disabilities and multilanguage learners. It also results from a modest decline in enrollment in Rochester since 2019. But in addition, it results from having added staff at a rate that far exceeds growth in student enrollment. And as we've shared that information, not just with the board, but with school communities, and I'm in the process of meeting with every one of the faculties in every one of our schools, people have been surprised about that because whether you're a teacher, an administrator, or a food service worker, a social worker, your local reality probably does not suggest growth in staff that seems exorbitant. And yet, we are where we are, and the numbers are the numbers. And so we've shared with this board previously what the breakdown was by type of position. And then an additional question we got was, well, when we break it down further by subject area and other criteria, what does that look like? And so John is going to give the board an overview of that as well. And I want to thank our colleagues in the Rochester Education Association who helped us look at these numbers and make sure we're getting our categories right in ways that reflect the reality in our schools. So thank you, John.
Very good. Thank you, Chair Nathan and Superintendent Pecow for that introduction. And so you kind of covered the gist of what we're going to cover here. I did not make any charts for the screens, because as you can see in board docs, the attachments that I gave you ahead of time, and the public can look up as well, the tables are quite small because there's so many columns and so many rows. But we're just trying to bring as much transparency, transparency as possible, to this ongoing discussion of the number of full-time equivalent positions we have across the district in all groups. As Superintendent said, or maybe Chair Nathan said, the reason I brought forward teachers specifically is because, well, one, they are our largest numbers, they are probably, I would say definitely, our most valued group, and honestly, we've had the most questions about this group. As Superintendent said, you may not feel like that if you work in a building that the staff has grown at a percentage greater than the number of students, but the reality and the data shows that it has. I think really what's going on here are a couple of things. As I think back to 40 years ago in 1983 and going to kindergarten for the first time, I knew my kindergarten teacher, my music teacher, my FIAD teacher. And as I look at the list of positions today, there are jobs that I don't think existed that far back. And I think it's really related to the complexity and the expectations and the demands that are put upon our schools and our teachers these days to solve a whole variety of problems and issues and to best educate our children. As was stated, we did work with Emily Lynch at REA. She gave me some feedback on this and said it looked reasonable to her. We broke the teacher groups into two categories. First, the classroom and the direct service teachers. Those are meant to reflect those teachers who in our mind are the teachers that stand in front of kids all day, or they have a caseload of kids that they work with all day. And another way of putting it is if they were gone, we would definitely be hiring a substitute for them for that day, because we know that they serve kids in that direct way for the majority of their day. The other group is the support teachers. Those are still valued teachers and still have very important roles and very do tasks that need to be done and that other teachers and other employees rely upon and value. But they may be the ones that are not necessarily needing a sub if they were to be absent one day. So just wanted to share a couple of the trends in the data that we saw. First, the classroom and the direct service teacher positions grew by 16.4% in the time period that we've listed. That's about 173 positions. Our support teacher positions have grown 107 or 75% from where they were a little over a decade ago. And again, our student growth over the same time has been 7.3%. There are many nuanced reasons as to why there has been growth, and so I'll just name a few of them, specifically like early childhood. There's been new funding provided by different state mechanisms that have allowed us to expand those programs. And so as a natural consequence, we've grown the number of staff in those areas. Same thing with kindergarten. We used to have a half-day kindergarten program, and we went to a full-day kindergarten. That almost doubled our number of teachers, not quite, but there was a significant increase in that year that that happened. Conversely, in our adult literacy area, there's been a reduction in teachers by almost half because of funding and rightsizing that program to the amount of funds that are available. I think several years back, I think there was a perception that career and technical education was being cut and that there weren't options being provided, but the opposite is true. We have grown by 18 teachers in the career and technical education, and now, instead of what might have been thought as home ec and shop class, now have offerings in agriculture, business, family and consumer science, information technology, law enforcement, project lead-the-way and work experience. So there's just a whole variety of new offerings that have come about over the last several years. I think along the way, too, there's been an emphasis put on social work and school counselor time, and that's, those are valued positions that our principals, excuse me, have wanted, and they've used funding in their budgets to support those positions. And so they have been added over time. I think there's also been a misconception on certain positions, like teachers on special assignment, that, oh, you must have so many teachers on special assignment, they're not in the classroom. The data shows the opposite. We've gone from 22 teachers on special assignment down to, excuse me, from 29 down to seven. So we've decreased by 22 over this time period. So I think I'll stop there and just see if there's any questions, as you have reviewed the chart over the last week or so.
Director Cook.
To me, the biggest takeaway, looking at this detailed set of information, and thank you very much, by the way, for working with REA to compile this and provide this information in this format, but the biggest takeaway is the increase in special education, both direct service teachers and instructional coaches. Together, it accounts for almost half of the increase in teachers over the last 10 years, when the student population has increased by a little over 1,000. And there's been a nearly 50% increase in the number of students qualifying for services under an individualized education plan. And at the same time, the other thing that jumped out at me was that while there was a pretty significant increase in the number of students over that 10-year period, the number of elementary education teachers at grade one, two, three, four, or five, you mentioned kindergarten, had its own considerations because of the move to full-time, but didn't increase much at all. And in fact, some of those grades decreased, which, you know, I think is about as clear an illustration as we have of the net impact of the failure to fund the special education cross-subsidy has meant educating more kids with the same number of elementary grade-level teachers so that the appropriate number of special education teachers can be provided to service kids. So, you know, that was the biggest trend that I took away from looking at this, but just really underscores the impact of that state-level decision. So thank you again for providing it.
Other board members? Oh, Director Workman.
Just a quick comment. This chart, and I'm being 100% sincere, is fabulous. It's the kind of thing that I've been looking for, for a very long time, and I'm really glad that in working with the REA, that you were able to put this together to this level of detail. It just, it's extremely helpful, so thank you.
I would just point out that we have up to five decimal points of data on all these, but we've rounded them to whole numbers.
Thank you.
Or it would be really hard to read, so.
Thank you.
Know that there's some fractions in there, too.
Director McLaughlin.
And I echo Director Workman's comment, but not only the numbers, I mean, I got this in our board docs, I'm like, I don't know, but your explanation today has been extremely helpful, thank you.
So do what you see in any of these numbers not modify the budget parameters, because those are based on solid data, but modify how you're thinking about the feedback you're getting on staffing from buildings or as you develop the final recommendations?
No.
So you weren't surprised by anything you saw?
I think just a prelude to the next meeting, we will probably add one more column, or we'll find a way to summarize now where are we going or what's going to be likely in the superintendent's recommended budget to you in May. So we'll have more detail on that.
Great, that'll be helpful. Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Our next area is preparation for action. Item 8.01, School Resource Officer Contract 2023-2024. This is a preparation for action item, board members. We're scheduled to take action on this contract for the next school year on April 11th. Superintendent Pecow.
Thank you, Chair Nathan, and board members. We have got a PowerPoint that, I apologize, was added relatively briefly before the meeting, and I'm hoping we can bring that up. I know that both Jackie and Lori were there, but you have it on board docs. And so while you're, we're bringing it up and giving a chance, there are a few broad points I'd like to make about this. It is at the request of board members, and I think it is a very good idea that we are bringing this up tonight, such that the board has multiple meetings to consider this issue before in May, you would need to make a decision. Either taking no action would actually roll over the contract with Rochester Police for School Resource Officers, or taking action to propose changes in that contract would also need to happen before that May deadline. So we're not asking you for action tonight, but we're beginning the process. It'll be an invaluable chance to hear the thoughts that you have about these issues. Before I touch on some of the data that we've pulled together and that I'll invite Jackie Peterson, our chief of schools, to help me answer questions about should you have them, I want to just frame the fact that this is an issue and a topic that I wish we didn't need to dedicate time to. And I wish that I did not believe we need police officers in our schools. I have reluctantly concluded that we do, and so my recommendation to you is to renew this contract, but I do not make that lightly. And I deeply understand the concerns that board members have raised and will continue to raise about this issue, and I think they have put us in a much better place than we would otherwise be with police in our schools, and that many districts are, in fact. This board has devoted extraordinary This board has devoted extraordinary time to this issue. As you know, you directed that we convene a working group to develop a memorandum of understanding, that Tuanda Burks facilitated some implementation work on. We had Monique Davis of the U of M do a review of the research. We are finishing a co-design process that wasn't directly about SROs, but that was about bringing students and staff together to think about issues of school culture and climate and belonging, and that will, you'll get that report and meet with those students and staff in the months ahead. And in fact, we have spent exponentially more time on school resource officers than we have spent on literacy or any academic subject, multiples more. I don't think that's inappropriate, but I think it's important to keep in mind as we move into our strategic plan. So, two pieces of data that we wanted to share with you, and we are, this is the evening of 1,000 impossible-to-read charts. So, the chart that you see before you right now is actually the chart that maps out the activities that we have been able to identify our SROs as engaging in directly in our schools. And I want to make sure, is that in board docs? Are we finding that?
Yes.
Okay, good. What we did using RPD logs was tally up the either investigations or incidents that SROs have engaged in in the school year to date. We don't have an exact breakdown of which were just investigations and which were just incidents, which were actual incidents, because that's RPD data and we would need to have a diagram. We don't always know if something results in charges or a ticket. In the majority of these cases, the investigation did lead to discovering an incident, but not in all of them. There may have been an investigation and they concluded there was no problematic behavior or activity. But you can see there how many we've had across our high schools in each of the categories, beginning with accident or accident with injury, issues involving animals, issues involving general assault, assists, community service, disorderly conduct, disputes, drugs or narcotics, harassments, medical issues involving students, missing persons, parking violations, a person in crisis, project lifesaver, property damage or vandalism, sexual assault, suspicious circumstances, theft, traffic stops, trespassing people and weapons violations. And if we can go on to the next couple, next slide, it picks out a few of those that we anticipated might be the most confusing. Those are Rochester Police Department codes that we presented you with on the previous slide. Assist is a broad category, including activities that don't fall under very specific tasks like testing a vape for THC, providing a ride home to a student with parent permission, assisting staff in finding a student who walked off campus, or keeping a student who is under the influence safe until a parent arrives. All of those would be categorized in the general category of assist. Community service includes things like, things our, the school resource officers do after hours or national night out. And suspicious activity is another general category that looks at someone who's unknown in the building escorting them out, someone who's a social media predator messaging one of our students, threats to the school by a former student, or something like a fire in a bathroom garbage can. When I look at these instances, it raises an issue that I want to just pose for board member thought and dialogue. We've had some discussions in this district and also in others about the idea that the trade-off between, for our school resource officers are mental health professionals, counselors, social workers, school psychologists. I think when we look at these categories of infraction, it says, at least to me, that is there a long-term connection between the environments we create in our schools and the supports we provide students? Yes. But is there a near-term connection between having social workers or counselors available at our schools and stopping the kinds of infractions that you see? And I would submit that's a very indirect connection at best, that in fact, the immediate trade-off for SROs were this board to want to consider them is twofold. One, it is bringing in personnel that we employ who are not licensed police officers to work in a security capacity. Or two, it is bringing in police officers off the street who are not embedded in our schools. And so I do think that the discussion of mental health versus SROs is respectfully a false choice, that in fact, in the long run, enhancing mental health, I believe, does influence issues like these, but not in the near term in which we are dealing with these behaviors in our schools. And so I, we have not had discussion, because the board has not directed it, to consider those other alternatives to SROs. We looked at the research and found, as you will recall, there wasn't much research on that issue or inconclusive research on the impact of SROs. The second and final piece of information I want to provide you with as you begin your consideration of this tonight are some, an update on the things that this board put into the contract with Rochester Police Department that I believe have moved us in a much more progressive and positive direction than certainly the contract that existed when I got here. You can see we have regular meetings with administrative teams that the SROs are engaging in, and those focus on three primary actions: threat assessment to assess if there may be students we should be concerned about, continual revision of security in our buildings and review of crisis plans. We have SROs attending faculty meetings regularly and participating in those discussions. That wasn't happening before. We have one-on-one meetings with students that are happening, and those fall into the categories of restorative conversations of a student who may have been involved either in, with the SRO directly or in a challenging circumstance, assisting students, board games, parent conversations about issues like vapings. We do have our SROs regularly meeting with our equity specialists, and I really want to thank Will Ruffin II and his team for the work that he's done to broker that. Those were not always easy discussions. We did restorative circles with SROs and equity specialists, and those have involved support for students in planning activities. And then extracurriculars, having some of our SROs participate in mentoring, rock climbing, talent shows and clubs. And then you can see on our final slide, we have had SROs, and you had a brief glimpse of this from Officer Alzola a couple of meetings ago, doing class presentations on things like crime scenes, drug education, vaping and bullying, doing some grade-level presentations, again, on drug education, social media, fighting and conduct, how to behave when a fight breaks out. SROs meeting with parents and doing phone calls home, and you can see a number of the issues that the parent discussions have focused on. Some recent engagement with our student governments to plan some upcoming events, and then participating in restorative circles that have involved two particular issues, drug sales and fighting. I guess I want to conclude, board members, by saying, if this sounds like a ringing defense of school resource officers in our schools, it's not my intent, but I feel I owe you my best recommendation. I understand the complexities of this issue, and we really look forward to supporting the board as you consider this over the meetings ahead. My recommendation would be to extend the contract for another year and to continue to set very high expectations for the SROs that are in our schools. I will say, like board members, I get a lot of complaints about pretty much everything. I have never yet, in a year and a half being here, had a complaint about an individual SRO from any parent, any student, or any staff member ever about any action. That doesn't mean it won't happen, but I've had complaints about pretty much everything else. And were we actually encountering SROs in our schools whose behavior, actions, or attitudes were infringing, I think, on the direction this board has set for the district? My recommendation would be very different because the proof is in the pudding and in the specific behavior that those officers and the work they're doing in our schools. And with that, Madam Chair, we'll turn it over to board members. And again, we're not asking for your action tonight, but we're eager to know what support we can provide for you as you consider this issue sometime between now and May.
Any comments? Director Garcia.
Yeah, just the comment about SROs, you know, not being a trade-off or that it's an SRO versus mental health concern. I just want to clarify that, for me, it's not a trade-off and that, you know, that was never my intention. I think my point is that when we have a mental health issue, SROs are not the appropriate professional to respond.
Thank you.
And I think that we can't keep treating symptoms and behaviors only. We actually need to do some of the work. And so I think that we, as the community, the school district is a partner in that. And so we need to be addressing some of the things that are creating some of the symptoms and the behaviors and the problems that we're seeing in schools. And so I think increasing the presence of somebody who can introduce our students to the criminal legal system feels like a backwards way of doing that. I've worked on one end, I've worked on the confinement end of the school to confinement pipeline or birth to confinement pipeline, and it just, that just doesn't sit well with me. And I, I think some of it also maybe is the leadership, too, because we all, not all of us, but we had a little bit of a working group to adjust some of the, or, you know, look at the MOU and the contract language. And the fact that they can't even articulate and take ownership, not as a person, but as a system, that systemic racism exists and it affects our students is so disappointing to me. So I appreciate that you were willing to have that, you know, like, yes, I can own that, and I can recognize that there are things that we as a system need to do. But if everybody's not going to get on board and they're, you know, they're not going to make it clear that we're here to protect the students and we're here to increase services to them and increase accessibility of the classroom and their learning environment, like, I don't understand what we're doing. I don't understand what we're doing. So, again, it's not a trade-off for me. It's recognizing that when there is a legal issue, a legal or criminal legal professional should certainly be responding. If it is a mental health issue or if it's an academic issue, there are other professionals that are more appropriate to respond. And I don't think that, you know, I know Director McLaughlin's work and interest in, like, it makes sense to have people already embedded in the school so that there's already, you know, a relationship there. I can see utility in knowing the person who might respond and knowing that we have access to them and can share with them additional information that we, maybe we wouldn't be able to share, somebody like a beat cop who's coming off the street into the school who has like no idea what's going on in our district. And I also think that there are people that don't necessarily need to be like constantly present in the school for that to occur. Like, there are things that they can, you know, continue to do and support us, I suppose, if that, because I did take it as a glowing recommendation of SROs, that I think that, you know, if, if we're wanting to keep our kids safe and they're, they're responding to, you know, drugs in a school or a predator targeting one of our kids or a staff member, that I, yeah, I certainly would be like, hey, even as a mental health professional, like, this is not my area of expertise, even though I've done forensic work and I know a zillion attorneys, this is not me. This is something that you need to step in and take care of. That those, those relationships could also be built in other ways. And I also just want to say, for those SROs that I have met, both in this district and others, you know, they're, they're a special kind of person. They want to be in our schools. I think that they have, you know, deep interest in helping our kids succeed. And I do like a lot of the things that I hear from our SROs and, you know, sort of the immediate leadership, I suppose, that are kind of overseeing them. I, I hear and I feel, at least at that level, that they want to make those effective changes, and I can appreciate that. And I, I want to acknowledge the work that they're doing and the kind of difficult place that they're probably in, like, they got into this because they wanted to be able to protect their community, and then here we are saying like, yeah, but sometimes your presence is traumatizing to our kids, or the people who could or would complain aren't going to because they're probably incarcerated, or they don't feel like they have a voice because they were, you know, I don't, I could just keep going. So, all of that to say, I'm, I want to clarify that if it is a mental health issue, is when I have a problem with non-mental health-trained individuals coming in and taking action, and then we're turning it into an incident that occurred at our school and we're looking at it in this now legal lens.
If I may just say, that's incredibly helpful. Thank you for that additional insight.
Dr. McLaughlin. I have a couple of things to say about this, and I'm so glad that you've reminded us that we're not voting until April 11th, because I was worried this might move to action tonight, and I was terrified that I didn't have my, I didn't have a chance to say the things I want to say and the questions I want to ask. So, Dr. Pecel, I want to go through a couple of things that, from what you talked about here first, that when there's reference to threat assessments, I read that as a threat assessment from outside the school to inside the school, but as I heard you say, it's, it can be broader than that. So, can you talk a little bit more about how that term is used within the district?
And I'm glad Jackie's joining me. It can be confusing. The term can be used to describe a threat to a school building from outside. It is also used to describe a threat, often from a student that is in the building, that we have very rigorous processes. I have to say, I superbly maintain processes in Rochester of investigating, say, a report from a kid of another report. That is the threat assessment that I was referring to is a major focus of our SRO meetings with admin teams. But Jackie, you're closer to it than I am.
I would just add that if a school has a threat assessment team, so if a student is posing a potential risk to the safety of the school or the people in the school, that there would be a process to assess whether that student, you know, was serious about whatever they might have said or posted, or if they have the ability to carry something out. So, it's essentially a safeguard rather than in some of our, some schools across the nation where people have heard things that kids have said and not acted on it or checked into it or thought, they don't really mean it. We take all of those seriously and we have a process for going through to know, is there really a threat to our school?
And I guess kind of taking on Director Garcia's questions and, you know, comments, too, that, does that also include mental health threats to student, students' threats to themselves? And is the response different if it's a threat to school students or a threat to themselves? Does that incorporate?
Yeah, if it's a threat to themselves, then it's the mental health practitioners in the building that would respond and support the student.
Do you feel that the school community understands that distinction? Is there something we can do to increase understanding of those kind of different pathways?
Of the supports that are available? That's been an age-old. We've, you know, wanted to make sure our students know what the supports are available in the building, but in terms of the conversation tonight, our SROs would not be involved except for if a parent would ask for a transport to, you know, an outside agency for a student to receive emergency support for an issue. I do know there are some SROs who've had phone calls from parents asking questions about, or sharing concerns about their student, and it's led to the SRO making a referral because it's not in their field of expertise. So, but I think in terms of making sure our school communities know, I think the biggest issue is making sure our kids know how they can access help themselves.
And those kind of details about the SROs being able to make that distinguish, distinction and making the referral, that might be helpful to have that information in a presentation like this so that we recognize, we're all on the same page, that we recognize they know how to do that and are able to do that.
That cell that indicated person in crisis, that would be times that our SROs have transported with parent permission or at the request of parents to St. Mary's, for example.
Okay. And I want to switch gears just a little bit, that category of assist, does, and I could see that either assist or disorderly conduct could include the scenario that I'm thinking of, but I'm really thinking about a fight at school. Does that, how, could that be assault, assist, or disorderly conduct? Can you talk?
Very different. Assist is really a catch-all category, and I ask for, you know, so I could understand it myself, specific examples, and it really is all about, like Dr. Pecel mentioned, testing a vape device to see if there's THC. It could be disposing of a, of a potential weapon that's been removed from a student. Frequently, it would be, like, the front office might call and say, there's a student or a person in our building that doesn't belong here. I don't know if this person really is a student here. So, approaching an unknown person and assessing whether they should be there and asking them to leave if they don't belong there. They would even include assist as some of the nights that we had SROs in our hallways here during a board meeting for support. So it's a wide array of basically responsibilities that don't fall under those other categories. It's a catch-all.
And that's.
It does not have to do with. not have to do with like assisting to break up a fight, or assisting in a situation where they're standing in place of an administrator.
And that, I guess is my question, is that, I'm not naive enough, and I know from prior experience, there are fights at school. Where, what category do those fall into here?
That would be assault or disorderly conduct. And generally, disorderly conduct is often after the fact if a parent requests charges, or if we feel that there need to be charges. But not necessarily stepping in and breaking up a fight.
And I guess where I come to that issue, particularly of any fights at school, is that, as Director Garcia indicated, that I have an interest in this, in the sense that my concern is the concern for students being at risk of seeing police violence in the school.
Yeah.
That, that's why I'm more on board with having the SROs there that are trained and experienced in the school environment versus an officer who has no idea what's happening and coming in and doing something that might be alarming to the other students. Can you talk about that?
My estimate would be probably like 90% of the fights that are broken up are not broken up by an SRO. They're not in the, you know, you have to be in the right space at the right time. And so, it's generally a staff member. It might be administration. It might be a staff member who feels comfortable stepping in. But I would say the majority of the fights that I've worked through are not broken up by an SRO.
That's good to know. Thank you. And Dr. Pekal, I guess to your comment about what other things we want to know, the notes that I made for myself here in preparation for the fact we might have to vote today, are things like, I went through the contract and made some comments that I feel like are still missing in my mind, that this presentation's helpful and it gets us partway there, but perhaps not all the way there, is that I would like to see data from the police department when they talked about and signed the contract that talks about alternatives to criminal prosecution when appropriate. If they're doing that, and I expect that they are, because I know that that was a, a big interest of their department. But I'd like to see the data to make sure that that's happening and what that looks like. And again, the, the topic of referral, referral to other resources. The contract also talks about opportunities to reduce community violence, create better police and community interventions and outcomes. I look at it, I think when we were developing that language and, and when we wrote that, we incorporated some of the content from when the officers came to speak with us, talking about community violence and community interventions. I'd like to see a little bit more about what they're doing in that context. And if, if, you know, we're not there yet, that's, you know, that's fine. We just need to know that and what they're planning to do. Talking about education opportunities for the officers, whether it be back-to-school training, or equity inclusion training, childhood trauma, supporting special education students, cultural responsiveness, and crisis intervention. I'd like to know more about, are those things happening in their training, either through the district or otherwise? Or are we still working on that? And I do feel that we're making good strides about them not being involved in discipline. I would like to know a little bit more from the district to, to make sure, I think the SROs understood that and understood that coming into the contract revision. I want to make sure that the entire district now knows that. So if we could get a little more information about that. Oh, and then I did make a note, the contract that was in Board docs, I don't think it incorporates the current assignments with the sixth officer. That I think it had, I only know this because I happened to be sitting with Officer Smith at Mayo yesterday. And he told me what they were doing and it didn't match what I was reading last night. Just based on adding the sixth officer, the assignments changed slightly. And I don't think the current contract in Board docs addressed that. So, thank you. And thank you for letting me chat about this.
I think though it's correct in the Board doc, the, the intro to the Board.
Yes. It was correct there, but not in the attachments.
Right. Thank you very much. We'll be pleased to integrate that into future meetings.
Did you have any answers you want to provide now?
No, I, I will only say briefly, and Director McLaughlin, I appreciate you focused on the threat assessment. I just approved bringing a national firm to Rochester in June to do updated threat assessment training. And one of the next generation parts of it is to integrate emotional, mental wellbeing teams into the threat assessment process, which we've done, but that that will be a core part of the work that we'll be doing.
I guess I would just add to that, in my experience, that I think the SROs are good at that. An officer outside the school would not be. They would be much more inclined to bring a law enforcement response and not a mental health response. And I think that's where the, the value of the SRO comes in, is they can make that distinct, distinction because they're, they have more advanced training about that. They know what the kids are dealing with. And that that's one of the values they bring to being on the team.
I don't have data tonight, but I do know that restorative circles have happened with Three Rivers to work with students who've had legal issues, to find other, other ways to resolve other than criminal charges. And then I also can add that we've had some mediation between families that SROs have facilitated outside of the school day. So, we've had, for example, if, if students have an issue on the bus, and parents will often say, I want to talk to that other parent. And we don't have a means to bring parents together in, in the school, that our SROs have been really successful in doing that and resolving issues that might be taking place in the neighborhood or outside of the school.
And that's an example of that community intervention that I think that's, that's helpful here.
Dr. Cook?
Er, oh.
Did you have your hands up?
Well, yes.
Okay. Then Director Barlow.
A quick question, Dr. Pekal. First slide in, SRO incidences or investigations, and you made reference to the call logs, I believe. So, is it have to say then that these are a reflection of the physical address to school district properties, since it's making reference to the call log? Or are these incidences which occurred during the course of the school day?
Jackie worked, thank you. Great question. Jackie worked with RPD to put this together. So you should get the answer.
Yes. We, we use data just related to the school. So in the past, we've talked about, like, a traffic stop that happens to occur near Century High School, gets logged at Century High School. Though this does not reflect anything that's outside of the activity associated with the school.
So, we can, anything that occurs from school property is not a part of this?
We, we removed anything that was a, a stop that took place that isn't related to sent, to the, to one of the schools. So if it was a police stop that just happened to occur in a parking lot, it does not, it is not reflected in this data.
Okay. Thank you.
We did have to go through documents and weed that out.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
But just to build on that question, it could have happened outside the school day, if it were during extracurricular activity, or a sporting event, or something like that?
Yeah. I know a number that are, you know, after the school day in the parking lot. So yes, absolutely. But they involve our students.
Yeah. And just further explanation, because in the past, there seemingly was some difficulty of weeding those events out. And I'm glad to hear that you've done that. Thank you.
And actually, the officers themselves are recording their interactions and their, their activities. So, before we were, the police would run, RPD would run a report. And that's why we would generate all these outside, all traffic stops and things like that. So, these, these logs are kept by the, by the officers themselves, the SROs.
Director Cook?
Well, Dr. Pekal, I appreciate your introduction and your, the, the way that you presented the choice for the board about what is the true alternative to school resource officers, and it is the, the need for a security presence, perhaps supplemented when necessary with calls for law enforcement assistance, but without that integrated relationship. So kind of in that, considering that potential alternative, what, one of the things that I've, I've understood about the school resource officers' relationship in the school is that complaints that might begin with administration or come from a parent that has desire to involve law enforcement or questions for law enforcement, it's a natural transition to direct those questions to the school resource officer. What about, and maybe, I'm wondering if this happens now, if a parent, and maybe we don't know, but if a parent makes a, a police report, or reaches out to the police department about an issue that involves the school, does that also get referred to the school resource officer because it is connected to a school incident?
It does. So, RPD, if, if a parent were to call in, in the evening and say, this happened to my student while they were walking home from the bus stop, RPD will have an officer go out and talk with the parents, because I'm sure they want to take care of the concern, or get the, the ball rolling. But then that, the officer will refer the case on to the SRO the very next day. So then the SRO takes over an investigation. They speak with the parent, they talk with the student, so that it's someone familiar to the kids that are, that work the case. So.
Okay. That, that's good to know. So, I mean, that part would, would go away without the school resource officer relationship. And then I think-
There's one additional wrinkle to that, though, that Director Cook is, is actually very important. We regularly get, have parent requests, parent and other caregiver requests, that an issue go to the SRO. And this actually comes to me with surprising frequency. The parent's upset, they want to go to the SRO, and we have to say, no, actually, that's not an SRO issue at all. That, that's a discipline issue. That's something that we're going to handle. And it's not an SRO. And the parent wants to go straight to that. And we, that doesn't, there's nothing criminal about that. It's an issue. And I'm happy to say, 99% of the time, they're fine once we handle it. But some people have this desire right away to go to that. And so, we have to explain why it's not an issue that involves criminal activity at all. And it's, it's a very important line to keep very clear, so that we don't just do that. And even if sometimes people reach out directly to an SRO, those SROs also are, I think, increasingly clear about what is a discipline issue for school and what is in their bailiwick. And then they hand it over to administration when it doesn't have any potential connection to illegal behavior.
And then kind of along those same lines, and I've, I've raised this point before, that the Safe Schools Levy allows for spending those funds on a number of different ways of enhancing security in schools. But if we were, if the district were to look at private security as a replacement, or as an alternative to school resource officers, the, I, I would be interested in having some idea of what the cost comparison would be, and what the difference in capacity would be for private security service. Would they be armed? Would they, would there be some difference in their capacity or ability to respond to crisis situations and assist in threat assessment, and, you know, any of the other things that we've talked about that the SROs are responsible for? I think that would be a helpful way to frame the choice. And then on the, the last point, Dr. Pekal, the point is well-taken, that, that the board has dedicated a lot of time to this issue. And I can't wait to spend a similar amount of time on literacy and, and other topics that, that I think are important to students. But for, for myself, and I think likely for the board, part of the reason that this is so serious is because it is a, and that, I hope, a worthy investment of the board's time and energy, is because it is an extremely important lever in deciding what the, the school community and the, not just the safety, but also the, the sense of belonging is going to be in the schools. And even though it's a relatively small fraction of the budget, I think it has an outsized importance in the, the extent of welcoming and sense of belonging in, in our schools. But I, I will continue to put our students' interests first and gather input on, on this over the next couple of weeks. And thank you very much for the data and for providing some time for additional community input. And that's all.
I think there's a number of issues. Thank you. In, in pointing out the difference in time the board has spent on this versus literacy, the intent certainly was not suggested should have been, but to point out the difference, because of course, there's only so many hours in, in the day, and we do that. Should the board elect to want to consider an alternative to SROs, I would respectfully request a vote of the board directing me to do that. Because we have not done that, and this board has not directed me to do that. I've stayed very close to board direction on this issue, actually, on all issues, but this is one in particular. What we did do was look at the published research on alternatives to SROs, the published scholarly research, of which there was very little, and it was not conclusive. And that's not surprising, it's pretty recent. We have not otherwise been directed by the board to look at alternatives. And you were just naming some of the issues just off the top of your head that might be included. I would want to be very clear, I was investigating something like that at the direction of the board with clarity on what you wanted us to pursue, so that I was very clear that I was, we were doing that with clear board direction and support for, for figuring that out. One point that I can answer now is that half of the price of SROs is borne by the city of Rochester through the Rochester Police Department, and half is borne by the school district. That would almost certainly not be the case were we to take another approach. The full cost would be borne here. And as John shared previously, we have a surplus in the health and safety levy for a couple more years. And then we will need to bring you options as a board for thinking about that. More modest source of funding beyond the next two years, which we'll of course include in our budget recommendations. So, we're fine right now with that fund. But we do have a point at which in a couple of years we need to pare down and potentially assume some of those costs from the general fund that are now in that source of funding. But I, I would welcome whatever direction the board wants to give me on, on any of these issues, in particular, that, that issue. And, and would work with the chair and vice chair to identify a timeline for that kind of analysis at the board's direction.
Director Garcia?
And what kind of timeline would you anticipate?
I think it depends on scope. You know, how ambitious you want us to be in terms of looking at what other options are out there, in terms of how other places have done it, what type of staffing, structure, position, compensation. As I said at the outset, I'm really glad, and as I think Director McLaughlin illustrated, I'm glad that the board requested this come to you at this point, because we do have some time. I would need to make sure we could get you that kind of thinking, were the board wanting to see it before you made a decision on the contract. I'd want to make sure we could do a good job at it before May. So I need to scope it and think about it. And we would be glad to, we'll, we'll get it done. You know, I, not next week, but I know you know that.
Yes. I think my, I don't, I don't know what the, the description word that I'm looking for, but like, the tension that I feel, and maybe this is true of my fellow board members, is that, that request hadn't been made because my hope was that whatever Towanda had shared with us would make clear, like, okay, well, no, the SROs definitely have to stay because this is what the research says, or no, we do need to be looking at an alternative. And because it was a little bit of a wash, I think it, it illustrates a number of things. Like, SROs have been in school since before Columbine, and we don't have a lot of good data on that. Why? And I'm just going to make an overarching assumption that because we didn't care. We didn't care to have that information, so we didn't ask the information. And now we care to have the information, and we have this much of it. And so, we don't have a robust, you know, we can't do like this meta-analysis of all of these pieces of data. And it's so crucial. And I think, like, they were sharing earlier, like, the kids ask about relevance, like, why do I need to learn this today? And I think that they, they were the ones that were pushing a lot of this work in 2020, 2021. And now it's, I think, it's lost, like, for us, the fire in the belly. And I was hoping that we would get moving faster on something that meant something for the kids, because it's a lot of adults, like, us talking about what we think or what we want, and not so much hearing from our students about what they want and need, or being able to turn to data that exists about what our alternatives are. So, I would like for, I would have liked for us to do that two years ago. But I guess, we can, I mean, we can charge you with doing that. And I think that that has always been my interest. I think it was just, it sort of fell a little bit flat when the data didn't show- it was just, it sort of fell a little bit flat when the data didn't show something conclusive. And so now here we are. And I'm wondering if, would we be able to have something conclusive specific to our district prior to the end of May?
I'm sure what we could do, Dr. Garcia, is, is summarize what a number of other districts have done that have made different choices. And so what has, what have they done structurally, to the extent that they're willing to share it? What have some of the costs been? That would not be rigorous research that obviously looks at it independently. That, that I think we could definitely do. And as you explained, the research on SROs is, is very contradictory. It's the research on alternatives to SROs that is particularly thin. And so, what we could essentially do is some outreach. And we could take a look at what other districts have done. Monique did a great job looking at the published research, but that's, we didn't ask her to do outreach, to identify what those alternatives might be. And again, we'd be pleased to do that if it's something that the board would like to direct me to do.
And Madam Chair, just, so, the superintendent makes the point that unless the board, via a vote or consensus were to direct him to do that, there are just great ideas that have been presented thus far. And, and so, I, it's my hope that we, no one would leave thinking, "Okay, well, I'm expecting the superintendent to provide something," when he's pretty much indicated that he's met the mission that we've directed you to act upon thus far. And, and unless there is a motion that is developed, we'll probably move this, move to the next agenda item momentarily. I just wanted to make sure that board members were clear and, you know, understanding that while we're voicing various levels of concern, the work's been done, and it sounds like no additional work will occur unless the board directs them to do so. Is that your understanding?
It is. And it's, it's, it's only insofar as this is an incredibly important issue that, as you all have directed. And so I feel I need to be taking board direction on this issue. And I'm always pleased to take board, board direction. Should we ever get to a point where I'm not, that'll be a separate conversation. But on this issue, I would, I, I would respectfully request that you direct an analysis of, to the extent that we are able, of what alternatives to school resource officers have been and what we can identify about those. Again, you do not need to take even that action tonight. We have other meetings. You certainly could. And I hope the board appreciates why. I feel that's one on which, for me, to kind of direct staff to venture out without the board saying, "This is something we want to look at," I don't think it's keeping with how you've directed this process thus far, which you have directed each step of this process. I brought you some ideas. And so, we certainly could, we certainly could undertake the kind of investigation that, that we would be able to do, talking to other districts, for sure.
As board members mulbat, I want to ask a question about the data. So, you said that all of this data comes from the officers' logs, and the definitions that they assign are the way they have structured how they record the data. Given that we have a contract with them, and we, we do have requirements, can we enter into a conversation so that for those SROs, yes, they're part of a larger department, but because we do, are working with a specific population with specific circumstances, that we could work to some better definition of how they keep their logs? Because we're looking for this information, right? We're having this conversation where we want to see these activities, and we need more clarity. Because, you know, 49 items in a category where we're not quite sure just adds to the sense of unknown, of, of not knowing if, you know, some of those are things that we would find really to not be in the, the scope of what we want to see SROs do. So, is that something that, should we move forward with a contract, we could add that more specificity? And really, because we've had a few conversations about the law enforcement data and the referral data, we're not going to be able to make good decisions until we're really confident that we know what we're seeing and what these numbers reflect. So, I, I don't know.
I would just say, with the exception of the statement of Principal Dr. Garcia mentioned, RPD has agreed to everything else we've asked for. That, that's the one area in which they, they, they didn't. And Dr. Garcia has already addressed that. We certainly could make this request. And thus far, they have been very willing to accommodate the things that we've asked for in other aspects of it. I, I have trouble imagining why they wouldn't be in this instance, too. We, we do need to make sure we're doing it prospectively rather than retrospectively, and saying, "From this point forward, when you record assist, we need to break assist into these categories because it's of interest to the school board." I have trouble imagining that that would be a problem for them, but I don't want to speak for Rochester Police Department. I don't know if, Jack, if you have a perception of that. I know you worked on it with Sergeant Blonnik and-
Yeah. At first, I'd want to make sure that I didn't mislead the board that the, the SROs keep a log. It gets reported to RPD, so they don't have, you know, their own spreadsheets in each building. All of this data came to me from Officer Blonik with RPD. So they're using standard categories. They're not making up their own categories. I think we would just want to make sure that, you know, assist could be, you know, a trash can fire all the way to, you know, disposing of a pocket knife, that we didn't get so many categories that it's impossible to look at the data to, and that it's cumbersome for them doing their paperwork. But I can talk with them about doing something that makes it a little more understandable.
Yep. And the other data piece, which I would think would be a part of, or could be a part of a question we would ask other districts, were we to undertake and, oh, a look at alternatives? But I think it's something that Director McLaughlin has mentioned before. And it has been part of our conversation on SROs in the past, where we haven't, aside from some things from the Perspectives Project and some of our focus groups with students, we haven't done a targeted conversation with students, especially specifically on SROs. We've had students who have come to focus groups to talk about SROs, but in some cases, they've said, "I'm not the person you need to talk to, because I'm not the person who's engaging with them." As you said, we may not be hearing from all the students because of either concerns, or they're incarcerated, or, so I'm wondering if, for me, we've never found a good way to get what we can all agree is a good perception from our, from our cross-section of our student body about SROs. And I don't know if that, I bring up because Director McLaughlin mentioned it before, and it's just something that I, I think about when I hear Director Garcia talk about students. You know, they're the people who are the most effective. What do we really know about how they're feeling pro-con or somewhere in between?
It is an item on this, on the Minnesota Student Survey, if I recall. Students are asked about the presence of SROs and how they feel.
And we asked them to, we, I mean, that was a survey. It was just-
Yeah, it wasn't very-
It wasn't the best.
It wasn't the best. And it's not in panorama.
Yes.
There's nothing in panorama on it. So, Dr. Garcia.
I just, so, I know that we are strapped often for resources and time. And so, I don't want it to come across as like, you know, we're beating the dead horse about, yes, I would like to direct you to consider alternatives. But I think, because we've spent so much time doing this, that I want to come out, like, completely clear in my mind that we, as a district, are doing the thing that we need to do. And I, I just want to point out that if we do do this right, this would be such a pivotal moment, because we're either going to come together, at least with consensus, of changing the way police police in our community, because we're going to require all of these things from them to be able to, you know, stay in our school district, or we're going to be a, we're going to become the model for keeping kids safe without SROs, because we're going to come up with this alternative. Like, I want to make sure that we exhaust all resources, hearing from the kids, directing a little bit more of a, how do people, or how do districts that don't have SROs and used an alternative, work that system? Because I think it, it's necessary. Like, I want to have more conversation, like, shift the timeframe back to, we're talking about literacy, we're talking about social emotional wellness, we're talking about other things that are academic-specific, and having, being able to move away from this. But we've, I feel like we've spent so much time on it now that if we don't do it all the way, then this will have been for naught. And so, my suggestion to my fellow board members is, even for those of you who I imagine will just vote, "Yes, we're keeping their SROs," like, we still owe it to our kids to hear from them and to consider alternatives to this, because even if we choose to keep them, it may not be the thing that they want or need in the future. And then we can say, "We have all of this information for you." Like, "Thank you for doing all of the, the data gathering for this." And there's still more that we can do to say, "Here is the package deal. This is, these are our options. We've exhausted all resources to figure out what that would be, and now we are making a decision." And Rochester Public Schools, like I said, will either become, like, we're changing the way of policing because we're having it be the most inclusive and diverse and culturally responsive policing imaginable, or we're doing this other option because we know that that's not going to happen. And this is how we're keeping our kids safe.
Oh, Dr. McLaughlin.
I just had a couple of follow-ups in listening to the conversation. First of all, to Director Cook's point about things to think about, whether we have officers or not, the one thing that, I, I think you were talking about the head description was good, but I want to add to that communication, in the sense that if we go with some sort of other, other form, they wouldn't have the connections with our local law enforcement. And not only that, that cost piece, but also the very important communication of sharing information between patrol officers and SROs that I, in reflecting on, on Director Garcia's point, is that I look at this, I think it's valuable because it's about safety and belonging, and that it, it fits into that bucket of things we need to talk about. And I think, you know, that it's a very important topic for that reason. But I think that communication, we might be going the wrong direction if we have, if we do a different form, and we would be missing a very important piece that I do think helps keep the students safe. In terms of the belonging piece, I have always approached this issue from the perspective that, I, I agree that I don't think we have the full student voice, because I see students who, if they're anything like the students that I have contact with, they're seeing things nationally and locally about police violence, and that we haven't heard from them about the impact that that has on them to this issue. And I think that's important to hear. The other piece of things is that, the reading that I have, I agree with Director Garcia, that there isn't a whole lot of research on this, but the stuff that I have read does reflect the fact that, I think part of the reason there isn't a lot of research on this is because SROs across our country are so different, how the programs are run, how they're approaching their students, and that I'm not sure that the research would be helpful in that sense, because it's not apples to apples. There's a lot of apples to oranges on that. And I continue to believe that the way that we're doing the SROs currently, I think even, you know, past, but now, how we've moved the needle in, in this new contract, I think we're doing the SRO part right. I think there's things we could still improve, but I think we are very much further along the path to doing SRO right than a lot of other places across the country. The other thing I would say in terms of alternatives is that I did hear recently and watched a news conference from St. Paul. And I, St. Paul removed the SROs, and I think there's now going to be discussion that they might have them back. So I think that that pendulum swings based on what they're seeing in their community and how best to keep our students safe, I think is what we want to keep front and center here.
Director Marvin.
Very briefly, I, I think you hit the nail on the head. One of the big issues we're facing is the national narrative and the national truth about policing and what's happening here. Certainly, we can talk to surrounding districts and find out what they've done. I'm not sure how meaningful that's going to be, because if they made a big change from SROs to something else, it's been in the last year or two. I don't know how much data they have. But I, for me, the biggest issue is, what's right for Rochester's kids? And it's very difficult to divorce that from the stories, true stories that are out there about everywhere else. So, it wouldn't hurt certainly to get models from other districts, especially, you know, around here. I don't know, we're going to learn a lot from it. But I think we've learned a lot about the people who are in our schools, working with our students, the, the agreement we have with them, the strides they've made or haven't made. But, you know, when our, when Dr. Pikel said that he hasn't gotten complaints and complaints from parents or kids, clearly, there could be people who just didn't feel comfortable doing that. But I think that, that says something. Anyway, spending some time finding out, just out of interest, what I have other districts done, fine. But that's about as far as I, I think the research needs to go.
Superintendent?
There, there is some data in the Minnesota Student Survey, which we will share with the board. It, it's, it's interesting. Much higher percentages of our students say they wouldn't necessarily go to an SRO if they had an issue or saw something than say, they think it is a good idea to have an SRO or police officer at our school. For that question, I think it is a good idea to have an SRO police officer at our school. For 11th grade females, 9% disagreed and 4% strongly disagreed. For ma, that's 11th grade. For males, it was 6% disagreed and 3% strongly disagreed. At the ninth grade level, 3% of females disagreed, 1% strongly disagreed, 6% disagreed and strongly disagreed, 2% strongly disagreed for males. And for eighth grade, it was 3% disagreed, 3% strongly disagreed, and 4% disagreed, and 1% strongly disagreed. But as I said, much higher percentages said they would not necessarily go to an SRO, so it's complex. Just so that the board is, is clear, because obviously, we're feeling our way in this issue as a board and a superintendent who reports to the board. I do not feel I need a board vote to ask our students for their perception. I think that's an entirely appropriate thing for you to say, "We'd like to know that," and for me to say, "Got it. I, I hear you." I do think to investigate a major alternative to our current practice, which is what an alternative to SROs is, is something I'm requesting a vote on. But I don't believe you need to vote on everything you want me to do. I can hear you saying, "We would like to have this data on what our students are thinking." And that, we aren't entering the era in which I need, like, a four-three vote to do my job. But something like considering alternatives, I think as Dr. Marvin just summarized it, that is something I would respectfully request a vote, so it's clear that I'm acting on the direction of the board in pursuing, pursuing that work. And we will move forward with bringing you some information on student perception, starting with the student survey data. But I think we can also go beyond that and think about some ways to do that.
Director Cook.
Well, so I have a motion to, I move to, that the board direct the superintendent and the administration to present an alternative security solution in the absence of SROs, so that the board can make a better decision on whether to proceed with SROs.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. I want to make sure that Lori has, okay, discussion.
I have a question.
Question.
Would that include Director Cook reliance on RPD that are not assigned to schools? Or is it more a solution that does not involve our local police department directly providing the service? Because as I mentioned, there's sort of three food groups. One is, which I think is where a lot of schools were when many of us were younger, they weren't in the school. You also didn't have security personnel, and it was, they came in from the, the street. I would want to, is that something you'd want us to explore in this motion? Or is it more alternative structures school districts have adopted other than SROs for staff that they staff in the school? Or both?
I guess I have in mind staff in the schools, but I think the administration could certainly present whatever they think is the best alternative in the absence of an engagement with SRO, whatever they, with our SROs, whatever they think is, or you think, is the, is the best alternative to keeping the schools safe and secure.
And, and I would say, I think it would be, I don't know, might, limiting, if we were to say, you know, "Look at this, but even though you know those things might exist, don't, don't look at those." Because how, how will we know until we start asking?
I don't know. I might respectfully disagree. I've given you my recommendation-
I've given you my recommendation tonight, and I understand why you're interested in further analysis. I might if I were in your positions too. I think directing, we want you to look at staffing structures within school districts that are alternatives to SROs, that's clear. We also want you to analyze relying only on local police not present in schools is also clear, but they're quite different. And if you'd like us to bring you some of the implications, Director McLaughlin was talking about that a moment ago, of just having police off the street called in for incidents, I would ask that that be explicit. You'd like analysis on both of those.
Because that is a model that we know exists in some districts.
It certainly is historically how many districts work. I think there aren't many urban districts that have nothing.
I think it, I think it is how Winona operates, though.
Okay. We could look at that.
I don't know if, you know, they're not exactly similar, but.
I don't, and I'll just offer to, I don't know that anyone is asking, like, if we have to have a relationship with RPD, like, it makes sense to have someone who is, like, ours, rather than just the, like, 911, maybe I'm missing that. I mean, maybe that's not true. But I feel like, I don't think anyone has, has asked, but we do have a new member on the board, to sever the tie in such a way that we would not be able to, like, negotiate with RPD about who is going to be the person. They're just not in the school. Like, they have, they don't have an office, you know what I mean? Like, I don't, I don't know.
Then that, if I, if I can, Dr. Garcia, that might be termed, analyze the implications of working with Rochester Police Department without SROs in our schools. And we could take a look at what that would mean. And it might, I don't, I have no idea what their response to, but we could certainly undertake that conversation with them and bring you back what we found out if that was something you'd like us to look at.
Which is, so just to clarify, which seems to be a, we have three things on the table. We have the alternative security structure that are not police officers. We have a, places where the police department are contacted externally and don't have any dedicated staff. And then we have the third that you just mentioned.
I'm not sure those two are two different ones.
I think those are two combined.
How would we work with RPD if we didn't have SROs in schools? That's a charge that we could take. You could say, we want to know how you would work with Rochester Police Department if we didn't have SROs in schools. I could bring you back information on that. I'm not sure what it would take, I have to talk to them. Similarly, I think I could bring you back, here's what St. Paul did, here's what, you know, so we could bring you back some, some information on both of those two. I don't know what, yeah, what that option might be. Well, here's how we would do it if we didn't have SROs.
Or maybe just let them decide what that option looks like.
Yeah, we would, we'd be bringing that back to you.
Because obviously, it's either, like, we're doing an alternative, and whoever is potentially the head of that security option has a connection with RPD because obviously, those people are not going to make arrests on campus, the security isn't going to make arrests on campus. It's like mall cops, like, you still have to call the police officer for some illegal activity. But I feel like that would be something that I would, like, they can present to us on, if we're not using you, like, what is your role?
Director Marvin?
And I guess my question would be, and I'm not sure where this fits into what we're asking you to do, if we didn't have SROs, who would be handling all of these calls? Who, because these are not discipline issues, these are law enforcement issues. So if SROs weren't there, who would be taking care of these? How long would it take that person to get there? I mean, if this is a police issue, and how might it change the outcome? And I don't know if that's too hypothetical, but I mean, we have dozens and dozens of times when SROs have intervened appropriately, it seems. Who's doing that, then?
What do you mean, I mean, like, an assault, for example, like Jackie was saying, is like, if I'm a student A and I hit student B, it doesn't always lead to criminal charges. So there are other people that are responding, like, teachers are breaking up our fight.
Yeah, except, except, I mean, if, if, it seems to me that here, under assault, this isn't, and maybe I'm wrong, this isn't just a couple of kids shoving each other. This is something that could be potentially dangerous. I mean, this is bigger than just a little fistfight where a teacher gets in between and says, both of you go to the office. So it is a police matter, right?
Sometimes.
Assault, well, I mean, there's only, there've only been, there've only been.
I mean, they're categorizing it assault because they're officers, and that's their category.
But there's only been two of them. And how many fights do we have in school? Don't answer that.
Fight and assault are two different things, but I would say, when, when I was a principal in a building without an SRO, because I was in an elementary building for some time, we would have to call non-emergency if it was something that we didn't need someone immediately for, or 911. And then whatever, whoever can respond comes, a street officer, and they may or may not be skilled at working with students. And I, I've experienced both. It's not super easy to have someone come in who isn't familiar with working with children. It often isn't helpful. So, so there's that piece. I've heard, I think it was Julie Kleiman shared with the board, and I, I could be wrong, but I'm remembering her talk about the difference between a street officer needs to get in, get, get this issue taken care of, and move on to their next call or whatever. And there wouldn't be, there's not the follow-up that an SRO can provide. So there is a difference between an SRO and calling 911 or even non-emergency.
I'm going to bring that conversation back to the resolution in terms of Director Marvin's question, because what, what you said is, if we were going to take an action, you wanted something very specific from us. So is that question that she has about who would handle this, is that part of what you see, the kind of information we would get if we were looking at other districts and asking the question, what are alternative security structures?
I don't believe so. Actually, I think it's exactly what we don't want, which is putting me in the position of giving you an alternative that you haven't directed that I explore. Who would do these things if they didn't is too general. I, I would recommend a variant of this, picking up on Director Cook. I'd direct the superintendent to gather information and report to the school board on two approaches to school safety. One, district staff position, district, district staff who provide security without the presence of SROs, that's one. Two, partnerships with police departments that do not include placement of SROs in schools. And so you're giving me very clear directions. Tell us about staff positions that are district positions. Tell us about how you might partner with police that don't put SROs in schools. And the reason I draw, you're asking a critical question, and I feel to say, give us an alternative to do these things without SROs is not quite as clear as, look at this alternative to SROs and look at this alternative. Now tell us what the implications might be. So I am pushing for that level of clarity and the two things you want us to take a look at.
Director Cook? Does that go along the lines with your original?
Yes, I, I think that that's, yes, that is concordant with, with, with my intent, with the words that I use. I, you know, I, I'm, what I'm mindful of here, and I appreciate that you've already given us your best recommendation, and I, that carries plenty of weight already. But what I'm mindful of is, when there's difficult decisions, clarity comes from considering whatever the least cost alternative is. And, and actually, this least cost is, that's a, you know, businessy term. It may well be that the, to the extent there is an alternative that provides a similar level of security that you would recommend, it's a lot more money. That's, that's perfectly possible. Or that the capacity in certain circumstances is far reduced. That's also certainly possible. I don't know that information. I think the entire board would benefit from having the clarity of what this choice would mean, meaning the choice of whether or not to take an action with regard to the SRO contract that is up in May. What would the implications of that be? So that is the spirit that I'm coming from, is trying to understand fully what that alternative is. And often, clarity comes from considering whatever the alternative is to a contractual arrangement. So that, that's, I think you have accurately understood or characterized the nature of my inquiry. And I, and I believe, Madam Chair, that we have a motion and a second, and, oh, sorry.
Director Marvin?
So, just so I understand, we would actually be considering whether, one of the considerations would be whether to have SROs in the school or have the B officers come in and handle those issues? And it seemed to me that the board had really laid that one to rest quite a while ago, for any number of reasons, which have been articulated by board members pretty succinctly. So is that one of the pieces that you think we're asking you to do again?
Yes, Director, I've heard a number of board members say that is something they'd like to explore. How could you, how would you work with your local police department to protect school safety if you didn't have SROs in your school? And then the other option actually would be, what are other staffing structures that have been used to support school safety that are district staff or contracted employees and don't involve SROs? So those would be the two distinct options. And I, I added that because I heard several board members raise that issue, and I, I'm looking for clarity here. Like, what do you want us to, what do you want us to analyze so we can bring you back our best information?
Any other comments before I call for a vote?
Will you restate the motion that we're going to be voting upon?
Do you want to, please?
It's moved to, the board moves, moved to direct the superintendent to gather information and report to the school board on two, I'll insert the word, alternative approaches to school safety from current RPD practice. One, utilization of district staff or contracted positions who provide security without the presence of a school resource officer. Two, partnerships with police departments to support school safety that do not include placement of school resource officers in schools.
Clear? Great. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Same sign. Okay, so that's the majority. You've been so directed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie.
Okay. Thank you.
And next item on our agenda, oh, I know you're all looking forward to the agenda item on policies, as you usually do. We have two items in a row that I hope we can dispose of relatively quickly. We have the second, we have the first briefing of items from the February 24th meeting. And you've seen the items in the, I'm sorry, I'm looking, we don't need to read these, right? No, okay. But we do have a few additional changes to what you see in the drafts, thanks to some questions from Director Cook, which, thank you for catching those. So if you were, however you want to do it, if you want to look at Policy 502, otherwise I can just reference where the change is going to be. But if you're looking at Policy 502, Section Roman numeral 2A, the third sentence, in the policy committee, we had a conversation about adding the language school, or school electronics, and we did have a discussion about how clear that was. So the recommendation is to be more specific, to say that contraband includes school-owned electronics not assigned to that individual student, because that designation is actually on each individual device, property stolen from the school district, and other stolen property, thinking we should distinguish between both because they could be looking for stolen property coming from other sources. The second policy that has some additional changes that aren't in the draft is Policy 513. As you know, we've been working to standardize language throughout our policies, and Director Cook caught some inconsistencies in how we refer to parents. So in Section 2, at that opening paragraph, we're replacing parental with parent guardian. And in Sections 2B and 3C1, we're going to ask, add slash guardians after parent, so referring to it the same way. And then in Section 2C4, we're going to delete parental, and, and after the word report, add to parents guardians, so that we've got consistency throughout the policy. So are there any other questions on the February 24th policy committee recommendations? These have another briefing to come, so if you have any more in the meantime, and, and Director Cook asked, and that was a perfect way to submit the questions, to put it on ours, and then that's how we'll handle it, is to handle it at the table. So thank you. Right, the second item is a first briefing on our policy committee meeting recommendations from March 2nd. We've been busy little beavers. And we'll start with some summaries.
So Policy 511.01, fundraising by non-school organizations. The purpose of this policy is to address fundraising activities by non-school organizations. There are no changes, and this is the three-year review for this RPS policy. Policy 524 also has no change, Internet acceptable use and safety policy, the purpose of which is to establish requirements, expectations, and guidelines for access to the use of electronic technology. And this is the annual review of this policy.
Policy 527 is student use and parking of motor vehicles, patrols, inspections, and searches. The purpose of this policy is to provide guidelines for use and parking of motor vehicles by students in school district locations to maintain order and discipline in the schools and protect the health, safety, and welfare of students and school personnel. This is a three-year review. We made the same recommendation as we did in Policy 502 to add school electronics. And so we're also asking tonight to make an additional change to match what we just talked about in Policy 502, where instead of school electronics, we say school-owned electronics not assigned to that individual student, property stolen from the school district, and other stolen property in Section 3A. We also have in Policy 527 an additional change in Section 6B, where it refers to, in the third, the third sentence, a violation of law and/or school policy. The recommendation is to change that to district policy because it really is a district policy, not a school policy. Procedure 527A is the procedure that goes along with Policy 527, and in discussion with our cabinet members, this was to address parking violations and vehicle searches. The Policy 527A changes we've made covers everything we need to cover for vehicle searches, and we no longer use parking permits. So there's no need for a procedure related to parking permits, so we're recommending retiring that procedure.
For Policy 703, the annual audit, the purpose of this policy is to provide for an annual audit of the books and records of the school district in order to comply with the law, to provide a permanent record of the financial position of the school district, and to provide guidance to the school district to correct any errors and discrepancies in its practices. There are no changes recommended, this is just the three-year review. And a procedure as part of Policy 703 is Procedure 703A, the annual audit. The procedure outlines the process and timelines for completing the annual audit of the books and the financial records of the school district. This procedure has some minor changes, or minor language and title changes.
Policy 706, acceptance of gifts, which states that it is the policy of the school district to accept gifts and donations only in compliance with state law. There was some language removed that said, as part of the consent agenda, since it requires a two-thirds vote. So this will always be a separate agenda item.
And for Policy 720, food and beverage vending machines, the purpose of this policy is to establish procedures to govern vending machines installed in the school district facilities. This is a three-year review of the policy, and there were two changes, a dollar amount to conform to Minnesota state statutes, and a title change. And then Procedure 720A, vending machines, to establish consistent practices for the authorization, installation, and administration, and accounting for vending machines in school district facilities. This procedure was last reviewed in 2013. There was one title change and a timeline change.
Policy 722 is public data requests. The school district recognizes its responsibility relative to the collection, maintenance, and dissemination of public data as provided in state statutes. This includes some definitions that were added from new MSBA model policy, which reflect definitions that were provided in Minnesota state statutes.
definitions that were provided in Minnesota state statutes and legal language. And policy 806, crisis management, the purpose of this policy is to act as a guide for school district and building administrators, school employees, students, school board members, and community members as to how to address a wide range of potential crisis situations in the school district. We review this policy annually, and there were no changes recommended. So these will come back for briefing, number two, at the next meeting. All right, moving on to preparation for, or sorry, action, approval of new achievement and integration plan 9.01, Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Nathan, and board members. We had a discussion at our study session the other night, and there was a PowerPoint that I walked you through that is on board docs that I'm not going to repeat now. As board members will recall, achievement integration program in the state of Minnesota is intended basically to achieve two purposes, integration across lines of race and culture and, to a lesser extent, language, and improvement of student achievement and closing of gaps among student groups. Rochester Public Schools receives funding through this, in particular because we are relative to the districts around us, what the state would call racially isolated, with a higher percentage of students of color and other students from protected classes than the districts that surround us. It can also apply to schools within a district, which I'm pleased to report Rochester Public Schools at present has no racially isolated schools within our district, and so this only applies to us at the district level. As we discussed at your recent study session, the responsibility for shepherding our achievement and integration plan was one of the things, as we put in place a major restructuring this summer, that didn't have the same level of care and ownership that it will going forward. And so I'm coming to you with less advance notice than I normally would like to ask for your approval. The plan itself is due May 15, March 15th at the state. The budget is due at a date subsequent to that that we're working to clarify. I've confirmed that we can amend this plan after submittal, hopefully by the 15th, and so we have other opportunities to dialogue with the board about other changes or issues that you would like to see us incorporate, especially as we get into the redesign of all of our funding and staffing formulas that will take place next year as part of our strategic plan. So the proposal is to essentially roll over the budget that is in our current budget proposal that you've seen in general terms and that we're expecting you will vote on in June, which covers equity specialists, some work of our Native American liaisons, really just at Riverside, a significant number of reading teachers in our elementary schools, and a number of other positions at Spanish immersion, at Gage Elementary, and some other areas. We will resubmit that budget to align with the new strategy, I'm hoping you'll approve tonight, by April 1 of next year. And so we're asking you to approve the new plan and roll over the budget with a revision to be put in place before next spring to align with the other decisions that the board will be making in the year ahead about our larger funding strategy. And we've confirmed with the Department of Education that this approach would be acceptable. And so the three new priorities that we are proposing become the focus of Rochester Public Schools Achievement and Integration Plan, all of which are major priorities in the strategic plan. Our number one, our achievement goal, which is a required category for all districts that receive achievement integration funding, would focus on implementation of our multi-tiered system of supports in all schools, and that that would have as its primary indicator significantly increasing the percentage of students in all demographic groups, especially what the A&amp;I plan calls protected class students on reading and math FAS-Bridge assessments. And the board will be hearing the result of a year-long review of our multi-tiered system of supports work in the coming months that's been prepared by the University of Minnesota, which will lay a baseline for that work. So first goal would be MTSS. Second goal would be, in the teacher equity category, increasing student access to teachers of color, and in particular, increasing our recruitment and retention of racially and ethnically diverse teachers. And we added administrators, though the state template focuses in particular on teachers. And so our key metric there would be a significant increase in the percentage of our licensed teaching staff who identify as a person of color or indigenous. And then the final goal area, which would be in the state template integration category, would be our new work on post-secondary and career pathways, that we believe both within our district and with our surrounding districts is a great vehicle to bring students together across those lines of difference. And so within our district, we will be doing that through our PTEC, our CTEC, and our new career pathways programs that the board received an update from Will Ruffin and Heather Hogan on the other day, and then through cross-district events, like our college fairs, our STEAM fairs, potentially over time increasing the enrollment of students from other districts in CTEC. We did not include that in this plan right now, because we need to do some more homework on our capacity to do that without depriving Rochester Public Schools students of those slots, because demand for CTEC is very high. But we have a lot of interest in surrounding districts in being in CTEC. So one of the questions is facility and space. So should we prove successful with our friends maybe at RCTC in being able to expand the space for CTEC? We think that could be another great possibility to add participation from our surrounding districts who are listed in the plan. So the request is to have board approval. We also are in discussion with those surrounding districts and also sharing the plan with our American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, which is both something that's required and something we would want to do. And if it's possible to get that approval tonight, we would submit that plan by the state deadline. However, as I mentioned, with the opportunity to add revisions as we have more time to dialogue about the strategies that are listed here.
This is an action item. I'm going to read the resolution before we do our discussion. Be it resolved that the school board of ISD 535 approved the 2023 through 2025 Achievement and Integration Plan for Rochester Public Schools. All the approval. Second. Moved and seconded, discussion or questions? Director Barlow.
I definitely support the plan. I just had a question regarding the multi-district collaborative. It's my belief that the, the seven districts which are part of the collaborative probably greatly benefit from RPS and be it the student school board that they're able to participate in, or other items. My question then becomes, how are we benefiting from the resources those districts might have? Is there a reciprocal analysis occurring to where we can maybe tap into some of the great things we're doing, as we are the great things we're doing?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Nathan. Director Barlow, it's a great question. Will Ruffin II and Amy Icke are actually resuscitating our relationships with those districts right now. Candidly, they have prayed since three years ago, the last plan. We have gotten enthusiastic eagerness to pursue that discussion with us, and also real interest in the post-secondary and career pathways. We have to get to nuts and bolts, actually, and what, what's in it for us and what's in it for them, and more specifically for our students and their students. So we would be able to update the board. I know those, because I'm looking at Will and Amy, those discussions are ongoing right now, but we've gotten very enthusiastic responses. All of those districts also get a more modest, but they get a revenue stream to work with us, too. So it's a two-way street, which is nice, in that we do have the opportunity to say to them, okay, how are we going to work together as the state expects us to do as part of this plan? So we'll be sure to update you on that in the months ahead, for sure.
Thank you.
Any other comments, Director Cook?
So on the, the, actually, first, on not having a racially identified school, the previous plan did identify at least one, right? Could you explain, I guess, what the criteria were and what has changed in the past year or the past three years?
Thank you, Director Cook. In the most recent plan, it was Gage Elementary, and the, the most proximal cause of not being racially identified were the boundary changes. In this case, that was certainly a factor in all of our boundary changes, and this was certainly an instance in which it worked. And so that was the primary reason for the shift at Gage.
Thank you. And then on the academic achievement goal, I love that we're finding a way to focus work on the multi-tiered systems of supports, and in particular have identified a literacy goal for the, the subgroups of students that the, the plan relates to. As the, the specific goals or the specific measures that we've identified for our goals are also district-wide goals to provide a statistically significant improvement in the percentage of students that are on track in the FAS-Bridge assessment for all students Could you explain how those two goals, which of course are not mutually exclusive, and we'll be pursuing both of them robustly, how we're thinking about this goal relative to the, the purpose of the Achievement and Integration Plan to reduce disparities in academic achievement?
Yes, and thank you, Director Cook. This is actually a really important discussion that I would welcome the chance to have with the board on an ongoing basis. So to have a down payment on it, for the last 20 years in American education, largely since No Child Left Behind and reforms in Texas that largely gave birth to it, most accountability schemes have focused on gap closing goals. So closing the goals between either affluent, low-income kids, white students, and Latinx students, or, you know, whatever. This template in A&amp;I also speaks to gap closing, as does World's Best Workforce. In my view, the only purpose of these goals is to improve practice and therefore improve student achievement. And as you and I are exchanging with some, some emails, I've concluded over a lot of decades thinking about this, that gap closing goals not only are largely useless for improving student achievement, they actually are unproductive. And there's two reasons for that. If you say to teachers, you need to close the gap between your white and black kids by this much, they're no longer focused on the needs of the students whose achievement they're trying to raise, they're focused on a very, almost unknowable difference between kids that we don't know how they're going to perform the next year and kids who are going to perform the other year. Whereas if we say the goal is statistically significant increase in the percentage of students in X group who score on track on FAS-Bridge, that's identifiable, it's positive. It also keeps us out of, I think, a zero-sum or a us versus them mentality of the white kids have to stay, or the affluent kids or whoever have to stay flat or get worse to close the gap, and we want a rising tide lift all boats. So the way the goals are written right now, and this is true of our World's Best Workforce proposal as well, is they are positive goals to raise the achievement of our most struggling students, which candidly, we have not done in Rochester Public Schools in recent history. The point you're making, though, is critical. It does ultimately need to be about that gap closing. And so we will be reporting that data to you and to the community, what that other trajectory looks like, and we will absolutely be able to calculate that for you at every step of the way. I would suggest that as we write, this is a goal that goes in a state plan, and we'll see if anyone at the state looks at it, but as we try and get our schools focused on really powerful goals that are going to improve outcomes, I would much rather have these kinds of goals than gap closing goals, for all of those, those reasons. And I've also, like, never met a kid from our marginalized community who said, I want to get a better test score than the advantaged kids. They want to achieve their dreams for life, they want to, you know, improve. So I know in part, this is almost semantic, but it's saying, let's focus our improvement goals on statistically significant improvement, but we do need to monitor gaps, and we do need to close those gaps over time. And so I would be glad to work with Peter Ruck on a way we can make it a both-and for this plan, if it was important to include that other piece in the plan. But we will definitely be including that in the dashboard that we're going to unveil in the fall. We'll be able to track both improvement in subgroup performance and compare those subgroups to each other or to the district average as a whole. But right now, the goals we put in there aren't written in gap closing language. If that was important to the board, we certainly could do it. It requires us not only to predict what we want this group to improve by, but what we think that group is going to improve by. And that's where I say it can become kind of immobilizing to schools, because how do I improve on that?
And to, just to follow up, I think how to frame the, the goals is very much your area of expertise, and I couldn't pretend to do a better job than what you've done. But I, more, more directly, do we think, aside from the goals, do we believe that implementing multi-tiered systems of supports will yield some gap closing? Is that our subjective expectation, and is it reasonable?
Yes, especially for our most struggling students.
Okay. Well, I think it looks great.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the Achievement and Integration Plan, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Passes. All right, one more action item, 9.02, update of Rochester Public Schools legislative priorities. Again, an action item, I'll read the resolution, ask for a motion and a second, then we can discuss. Be it resolved that Independent School District 535 approves adding the recommended language to the 2023 Rochester School Board legislative priorities, and directs the board chair to sign on as an endorser of the 2023 Increased Teachers of Color Act. So moved.
Second. There's the motion and the second discussion. Would you like to lead us, Director McLaughlin?
I can, okay. So the board is being asked to support legislation at the Capitol in Minnesota that increases, that it's called the Increased Teacher of Colors Act, Teachers of Color Act. One of the ways that we're going about this is modifying our legislative committee recommendations that we presented, I think we approved these in December, and to add a recommendation specific to this initiative, that I would ask the board to make that modification and support this statute that is being presented at the Capitol, and I can explain why. The, so we've been asked to basically sign on as a supporter of the 2023 Increased Teachers of Color Act. It's a very important initiative in our legislature this year. It talks about, and I'm taking some information from the Coalition to Increase Teachers of Color and American Indian Teachers in Minnesota. Kind of tying into the discussion we just had about achievement and integration, one of the purposes of this act is to close the opportunity gaps and to recruit, prepare, employ, and retain increased percentages of BIPOC teachers who more closely reflect students in Minnesota schools and make a difference in all students' lives. So I think it very much is consistent with what we just approved in terms of goal number two of the Achievement and Integration Plan. The other thing that I found very exciting about learning more about this proposed legislation is specific to Minnesota and our place in the country, that it will be the most comprehensive set of legislation in our country to address the multiple interconnected factors contributing to the severe and continuous shortage of BIPOC teachers in schools. So basically, what this organization is telling us is that, as we know, there are some significant gaps in Minnesota achievement, this statute will be historic in our country in making efforts to change that in terms of both teachers of color. It talks about not only increasing the teachers of color, but investing in various ways to provide grants and scholarships to do that. It talks about changing the teacher licensing that the teacher licensing board is in support of. It talks about, when it talks about being comprehensive, it really is comprehensive. It talks about different policies, and I think one of the things that's significant about this bill is that it's a lot of things that RPS is already doing, that it codifies the reasons for doing that, the equity reasons for doing that, the way it benefits our, all of our students. And I think that, I listened to the testimony at the Senate about, in the Senate hearing about this bill, and, you know, they had great students talking about it, great people talking about it, but I feel like one of the things that was left out is how important this will be, not just to our students of color, but to all of our students. To increase the teachers of color will benefit all of our students in our district, and I think that that's important to focus on. So I think it's kind of a two-part ask that we're asking for, is not only to change our recommendations, because the legislative committee met and very much supports this bill, it just wasn't something we necessarily anticipated that the legislature would focus on, but now that they are, and making a specific ask to our committee and to our district, the legislative committee supports that. And then secondly, signing on as an endorser of the 2023 Increased Teachers of Color Act, so that we can very publicly recognize that our district is in support of passing this legislation in 2023.
Any conversations, Dr. Barlow?
I fully support the recommendation, a resolution that our committee is bringing forth. I wonder, though, beside the potential passage of, or approval of this recommendation, will there be anything else the board may endeavor to do, or the there be anything else the Board may endeavor to do, or the committee may suggest we do in terms of creating community awareness and/or legislative support?
I can take a stab at that if the other committee members want to add in. I think one of the other things Board members could do would be to contact our local legislators and express our support, both personally and as a Board, but I think that that's what signing on as the endorser of this act does as well, and perhaps even a more public role, because it will be distributed statewide to all the legislators and the stakeholders.
The names of the endorsers are publicly available through the Coalition's website.
Right.
So, and they provide it every time they do a testimony. Most of, it's also good to mention, most of the provisions of these two bills, the House and Senate bill, have already been included in the Education Policy Omnibus Bill that's already been introduced in the Senate. So it's, it is, it has gotten to that next step, which is to be included in the bill. So that's good news. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor, oh, sorry, Dr. Garcia.
No, that's all right, I'm way back here now. My, I would just say my comment as a, of mixed ethnicity child, growing up as a Latina and being able to see other women, other Latinas, and other, actually, some Hispanic, too, it was incredibly grounding, and I don't think I understood the significance of it at the time. And I think it absolutely shaped the way that I saw who I could become. And I hear those same stories from our other students of color. And when I know that there are students that have disabilities, and they have a teacher who has a disability, or when they're LGBTQ+ and their teacher is part of the queer community, it absolutely does have an impact. And so I obviously personally support this, and I think, you know, Director McLaughlin said it, it's already in line with the work that we're doing, and I think this is just a way for us to very clearly and plainly show that this is something that we prioritize.
I think the other thing that I would add to it is that the state funding behind the financial incentives are perhaps the thing that's, we aren't able to do as one district, but the state can do, and it, that it's important to do.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes, thank you. All right, just a few more things. We have the updated ABCD on Board Docs. Are there any other items a Board member wants to bring forward for consideration on a future agenda? Hearing none. The Board questions and responses from tonight's meetings are loaded in Board Docs. We have a Board meeting on March 21 at 5:30, April 11 at 5:30, both are regular meetings, and a study session on April 18, and a regular meeting on May 2 at 5:30. Hearing no other business, this meeting is adjourned at 9:31 PM.